Well, you know what? We're just gonna keep going.
Uh huh. Yeah, we will.
Keep on keeping on, man.
Yeah, that's what you all you can do, but it's it's at times I go, why, I I wonder what I was thinking.
Well, as I tell ya, I've got to know what I know now.
But there's things I like about it.
Yeah.
I like I like the fact.
There's good days and there's not so good days.
You gonna make it to Toastmasters tomorrow?
Yeah, you know I am.
I gotta tell that, yeah. I'm doing a speech. I've been working on it.
Oh, you are?
I'm doing it on it. I'll mention it briefly tonight, but I'm doing it on the census. So I went to the census.
Oh, nice.
It's fascinating.
Yeah.
It's fascinating. I've been just doing all I just have gotten way too much information at this point.
Yeah, I might I might try and do whatever canned ones out of canned.
Oh, those are so much fun. Why don't you do them?
Yeah.
But they scare the.
I know, I I know.
We gotta get Jay Lynn to come back. She used to come.
Yeah, she should.
Uh, we don't call it Toastmasters anymore. It's the web speaks.
Oh, yeah.
It's fun.
Yeah, no, I I sorry.
Terry, was this part of the thing? Sorry.
It's all right.
Your disclosure memo still that's in C?
That's Agenda Z.
Okay. Is that why it says Agenda Item Z on top?
Uh huh.
I was just testing you.
Mine's just simply.
Oh, yeah, I didn't get to go in creatures.
Where's the main ones?
They don't know what's going on.
Okay. I think I got my report. Oh, nice. I downloaded it. Not a test. What, Friday? Friday evening? Hi, Jim. Do you know you give it to our chair?
Thank you. This is, uh, Item Z. Uh, yeah, yeah.
You guys really don't want to sit through the whole meeting to get to Item Z? Just say just say.
May I approach the dais?
Of course.
Um, of course you do. I think so frequently say that it says.
You're right.
This idea, I mean, it's really me. It's in this section of public hearing.
Uh, it says public hearings closed. Uh, oh, right. Uh, I'm okay with that, yeah. You can speak because I know that we've been postponing it. It's pretty much there. Yep.
Okay. Hang in there.
Oh, dear. Now I'm all I'm all lost.
Are we ready? Are you all ready?
Now I gotta get one.
All right, are we rolling? Did you get Rory's comment there on the public record? All right, the time is now, 4:03. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District Administrative Control Board. Their regular scheduled meeting this June 18th, 2019. Those in attendance are Greg Halliday, Jalen Hawks, Mary McGann, Curtis Wells, Terry Morris, Rory Paxman, myself, Evan Clapper. And, uh, first up is citizens to be heard for Thompson Springs Fire District. Any citizens to be heard? Moving right along, approval of minutes. Um, did we have minutes from May 21st? Jay Lynn?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from May 21st, 2019. And authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Jalen Hawks, seconded by Mary McGann. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Please.
Um, first paragraph, last next to last line, it says that council administrator Ruth Dillon and council office assistant to take minutes. I would guess we'd want to name the council office assistant.
You're so kind.
That's all I have.
Any other comments? Uh, do we need, uh, substantive motions with the edits? Or is that okay?
Or just as amended?
As, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Was that a aye, Terry?
It was.
Okay. Uh, next up, ratification of payment of bills. Rory?
All right, um, Grand County bills to be approved for Thompson Springs Fire District for 6/18/2019. Total bills, $66.23. Total bills and payroll, $66.23. Looks like it's just for the power bill.
Motion to pay the power bill made by Rory Paxman.
I move to pay the power bill.
Seconded by Terry Morris. Any further discussion? I'll call, oh, please?
Maybe I should know the answer to this, but aren't we paying somebody there? Like, shouldn't there be some payroll on it?
Some salary?
Yeah. I guess if the person's not complaining.
They took the week off.
I mean, I take the week off. No, the. We, uh, I'll have to check in, but I think that the, uh, the salary and benefits line item department that, uh, Chris.
Why can't you say, Chris? I kind of forget.
We used to pay them out of a different line item. But since we hired them on as employees, I changed where the expense comes from for their salaries. So I suspect that Chris may not be aware that I changed the account. So the report that she runs doesn't include. So I'll have to change. I mean, it's already made, so I'll have to go and talk to her and see if it includes that new salary and benefits line item in the report. She's probably used to running the same report that we've had access. But I changed.
What's the clean cleanest way for us to approve the bills right now? As presented? Okay.
Maybe call payroll and just say two. Yeah.
All right. Uh. I'll call for a roll call vote. Greg Halliday?
Aye.
Jalen Hawks?
Yes.
Mary McGann?
Yes.
Curtis Wells?
Aye.
Rory Paxman?
Yes.
Evan Clapper?
Yes.
Great. Next up is, uh, Fire Chief's report. Chief Markham is unable to make it tonight, but fret not, I have the report right here. Wildland W U E W U I fire danger rating has been elevated to high for South Zone Low Elevation, which is under 6,000 feet. Many Thompson residents have been mowing weeds around their property and helping others who don't have the proper equipment. This work is available for an in-kind matching dollars from state for future fire mitigation projects in the area. Thompson Springs Fire Department has been mowing around hydrants to keep them accessible in the event of an emergency. Fire chief is working with county fire warden to identify fuels mitigation projects for the future. Chief is pursuing confirmation that water use agreement with Crescent Junction Umtresite is still in effect. This ensures that a helicopter will be able to take water from Crescent Junction Umtresite Pond in the event of a fire emergency in the vicinity. Water is safe from any radiation.
The helicopter take water from what?
The Umtresite at Crescent Junction. The mill tailings. Uh, next up, we have the fire warden's report. County Fire Warden Bruce Jenkins.
Nice. Very good.
Thank you. Nice to have you.
Test, test.
You hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, Thompson Springs is doing good work. Castle Valley is also doing a lot of mowing. Greg can attest to that. Um, also, around Castle Valley, speaking for BLM, they're doing a lot of tea grass mowing, abutting lands, private. So if there was a fire, it would lay down before it came to private where their cutting was. Um, let's see, for the county, the score is six human caused fires to three lightning caused fires.
Six human?
I'm keeping score, yep. Um, so June 1st, we came into the state restrictions. And, um, since then, only five fires. But this morning, made contact with our local papers, local radio stations. They're gonna start broadcasting and printing, um, our media, uh, I guess our, I'm gonna leave one here in case anybody wants to see it. Just our media information on our restrictions and careless burning that's been happening. Um, so, yeah, we can pass it around. Um, so that's really all I have. It's it's nothing major to report to you unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions?
Thank you for being here.
Great, okay. Glad to see that happening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any new business? Seeing none, move on to old business. We have a report on board applications received. Is that Friday? Ruth, somebody?
I'm aware.
We got we got an application.
We've received one.
We received one application.
So and we need, we only need two because we need the county liaison to be the other, right?
Uh, no, we need three voting members plus the county county council liaison.
So the county council doesn't vote?
Correct.
Any insight on how to keep this one application on the hook until we have two more?
We can just.
Appoint them? Can we appoint them?
One of you step down.
I'll step down.
Uh, what if three of us were the Thompson board and the county liaison?
Oh, that one person then?
And two of us plus a county liaison.
Then we wouldn't have to have it at this time.
What we'd have to do is revise your bylaws to where it was worded the way you guys want it to be worded. I mean, that's what you need to do because right now it's it's worded, I believe, three to seven members, so that part's okay. Actually, now that I think about it, maybe it's already covered. It says three to seven members. Um, there's already a standing liaison for that board, supposed to be.
Yeah.
Uh, so, yeah, you could go ahead, not tonight, because we don't have it as an action item, but you could.
Take that one.
Appoint this person before we get other applications. We might not get other applications anytime soon. We don't know. We're still advertising, you know, through our flyer.
Can you, the bylaws, does it say that they have to live in Thompson Springs area? Could we get somebody from Moab?
The bylaws do say that they have to live in the district.
Bummer.
They do.
Jalen?
Or it may not be bylaws, excuse me, I think that's the enabling document.
Perhaps this applicant could recruit in Thompson since he or she, I can't remember, knows the residents over there. They'd probably have better luck word of mouth than we're having.
All right.
With our flyer.
Uh, so transitioning to future considerations, maybe we could draft a letter thanking them for their willingness to serve and that, uh, their appointment is imminent pending the formation of an active board in Thompson and ask them to please recruit recruit, uh, two other members.
Water board meeting, fire meeting.
That would work.
Yeah.
That would work. Have it on the same night?
Yeah, next time I I'm up there, I'll surface that issue to them, see if we can get them to do both.
Yeah, if we could do it five minutes after the water board meeting, we might be able to get some takers.
This is pretty simple.
Great.
So so that we would still need to, you know, appoint them formally and all that so that they're two separate boards. We've had that before and it has gotten confusing before, but they can certainly wear two different hats, yeah.
Yeah.
We are.
Yes.
Look at all this help we get. All right. Any other future considerations? Uh, public hearing, possible action items, seeing none. Any need for for a closed session? With that, we have fulfilled our agenda and I will adjourn this meeting at 4:15. And with that, I'd like to call to order the regular scheduled meeting of the Grand County Council on Tuesday, June 18th, 2019. Those in attendance are Greg Halliday, Jalen Hawks, Mary McGann, Curtis Wells, Terry Morris, Rory Paxman, Evan Clapper, Ruth Dillon, and Chris Baird. Um, starting us off, I'd like to start with the pledge of allegiance. And Alice, if you do this, the honor of leading us in the pledge of allegiance.
You can do it from right here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, next up, approval of minutes. Jay Lynn?
I move to postpone the approval of the minutes, which includes Agenda Items A through G. That's it.
Motion made by Jalen Hawks, seconded by Mary McGann to postpone the minutes of April 16th, May 7th, May 7th, May 21st, June 4th, June 10th, and June 11th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Next up, ratification of payment of bills. Rory?
All right. The Grand County bills to be approved for 6/18/2019. Total bills, $1,707,071.2. Total payroll, $267,260.46. Total bills and payroll, $1,974,331.48.
Motion made by Rory Paxman?
Second.
Seconded by Terry Morris. Any further discussion? Call for a roll call vote. Greg Halliday?
Aye.
Jalen Hawks?
Yes.
Mary McGann?
Yes.
Curtis Wells?
Aye.
Terry Morris?
Yes.
Rory Paxman?
Aye.
Evan Clapper? Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, general council reports and future considerations. Greg, you want to start us off?
Yep. Okay. On the 6th of June, had a BLM coordinating meeting scheduled. It was canceled. Um, also on the 6th of June, attended a road department barbecue because they had a good record on safety. And Jay Lynn was there as well as Mary.
No, I wasn't.
Oh, you weren't there?
It was me.
Oh, you.
I used to have dark hair.
That's right, okay. It was a good it was a good barbecue. Uh, on the 11th, uh, the Transportation Special Service District was canceled due to sickness, so we didn't, we weren't able to have that. Uh, on the 12th, Thompson Water Board was unable to attend because of my wife's surgery. On the 17th, uh, the change of government, uh, committee came out and presented to Castle Valley and I was in the in attendance of at that. Uh, worked up pretty good. I think I think we answered, uh, the majority of the questions for the citizens that showed up. Uh, today, attended the Rotary Rotary Club meeting with the realtors. Uh, it was a good, it was a it was a good meeting. Uh, of course, they're concerned about, uh, about what we're doing with the, uh, high density overlay and the moratorium. And so, uh, Terry was there, he answered the majority of their questions. Uh, and I'm sure he'll comment about it when he gets there. And that's all I've got.
Yeah. Jalen?
Okay, on June 6th, I went to the Kenyans Healthcare Special Service District meeting. Also on the 6th, I went to the road department barbecue. It was great to be with them. I've always appreciated Bill's leadership and the can-do attitude that that whole department has and always willing to pitch in and teamwork. Um, on June 11th, I went to the planning commission meeting. And just as a listener listener and an observer, on the 13th, I went to the form of government open house meeting out at the water district. That was, um, I I guess fun's not the word I want to use, but I can't think of a different word. Um, it was just impressive to watch that committee and their hard work and their engagement and, uh, you know, engaging with the citizens that came and wanted to know all about what's going on. There were quite a few people there. And I also went to a meeting at Department of Workforce Services on June 13th. It was with the, basically the who's who at the regional and the depart the state levels of the intergenerational poverty move initiative. Um, they, of course, wanted a report on Grand County and what we are doing here. So it was attended by myself and Mallory Nassau of the Grand County School District. And I will have more to say about that, one of the agenda items later on. That's all I have.
Mary?
On the 6th, I attended Housing Task Force meeting. It was a very positive meeting. Uh, HASSU has received the mutual self-help grant number 10, and they will be starting to build 11 units at Wind Wingate. Uh, and that some of their, uh, they're they're going to be able to do some deed restrictions on some of them, so they're very excited about that. Uh, they hired a new Vista who will do work to support support the Moab Area Community Land Trust and, uh, Housing Task Force. The Vista will study and develop policies and procedures for deed restrictions, which will help with our high density overlay and a lot of the stuff we're working on right now and the pad and other utah. Uh, and she will start on June, July 8th. So that was good news. The MAPS is going to break ground on, uh, 1st of August, which is exciting. They already have a waiting list. And, uh, that was that meeting. And then, of course, many of us attended the meeting with San Juan County Council on Monday, the 10th. On the, uh, 12th, I attended the Census Complete Count meeting, which was very interesting. I learned a lot and became quite excited about helping out with the census. One of the things we we learned was it's it was in the original constitution that Thomas Jefferson and Madison put it in the constitution to enable us to determine how to, uh, do the representation, how many representatives to the House for each state is determined through the census. It is also how they divide up our tax dollars. And so all the 87 billion tax dollars that are to go to different things is determined how much each state gets according to the census, and then that in turn goes to the counties. And, uh, it's approximately $1,870 the state loses for every person that isn't counted. So it's pretty significant and pretty important. Uh, it's also, uh, in 1879, they made it so that the records of the census are confidential and cannot be opened, so the fear people have that they're gonna look at them and then their landlord's gonna be mad because there's too many people in their house is unfounded. They are sealed for 72 years, which is just a year above the average lifespan of females at the time. So that was interesting. And it, the FBI attempted to get into the census in Denver, Colorado in 1980, and the Supreme Court told them they could not see it. So if people are talking to you and they say it's not safe, they're wrong. It's important because it will help determine our representation in Congress and it will also help give us money for Title I roads, transportation. So encourage people to do the census. And you will be hearing more about that because it'll be coming up. It's every 10 years and 2020 is the year. Uh, I also, on that same day, attended the homelessness coordinating meeting where we had the state came down. And they were here and they listened to our concerns and our needs. And their, the last, uh, session of the legislators has given monies for rural areas to deal with homelessness. And so now we're trying to wait, find ways to apply and get that money. It's, uh, the multicultural center is taking the lead and doing the paperwork on that. So that's nice. And, uh, they also wanted to know why in the past we found it so cumbersome that we stopped using the state's data system and developed our own. So they're gonna try, you know, make it so that we don't drop out again. On the 13th, it was the Solid Waste Special Service District meeting. In July, there will be, you know, uh, and I know later when it will be, but there will be a public hearing because there are gonna be some fee changes at both Moab Landfill and at Klondike. Uh, they, uh, there's gonna be, we're having the state come and we're gonna remove all those tires and hopefully work with the people in the community to have their tires removed as well. And so lots happening at the Solid Waste Special District. This is exciting. I have these pictures that show the improvement since we got our new director. Everybody's seen how much greater the recycle center looks, and now that shows you how much better, uh, Moab Landfill has looked. Today, I met, we had a meeting with, uh, TJ Brewer and Cody Greaves of the Fire Department, Dan Kirkpatrick of Monument Waste, Tony of the City, Samantha Borzak of the Sheriff's Department, Jason Brooks from the Moab City Police, Karen Dorgan from Rim to Rim, Evan Terrell from the Solid Waste Special Service District to determine how to move forward with the cleaning up of the areas around the creek and other areas in the community that were, that are at risk of fire because of the amount of weeds and dirt and trash around the area. It's, we, during the discussion, it was decided that it's a very multi-phase project, that it's gonna be five, six years before we even can say we have this under control. But phase one, on, uh, it was decided that on Friday, June 28th and Saturday, June 29th, the Solid Waste Special Service District will accept clean yard waste for free. So that if it's clean yard waste, you can go up there and dispose of it. If you have trash in it, they will charge you as usual because it's very different than how you. If you have trash in it, they will charge you as usual because it's very different than how you manage it. On Saturday, the 29th and Sunday, the 30th, there will be free disposal at the Monument Waste Transfer Station. So that, I thought that was a good step forward in figuring out ways to help people get their area cleaned up. And they're, wanted everybody to know that you can drop off chippable material at, at the city yards, and they will chip it for free. So that's good, that's something that the citizens should know. But we thought it was interesting and kind of scary that we had that fire in Pat Creek almost a year to the date of that devastating cinema court fire. So we can't let our guards down. And as a council, we might want to consider if we want to reenact that resolution of last year of not, not banning fireworks or encouraging people not to do fireworks in the city because we have a lot of areas at high risk. So we can put that in future considerations. Thank you. That's all.
Jaylen?
Sorry, I skipped over a couple of future considerations.
Okay.
Do you want me to save it till the end or?
The floor is yours.
Thank you. So at the commission meeting, the Planning Commission meeting that I went to, they did a couple of things that I was impressed with. Well, I'm impressed with the whole process, but speaking of just their agenda, they have a standing agenda item where they, the chair asks the commission, do you have any, does anyone have any conflicts of interest to declare with any of the items on the agenda? And I think that's actually a great idea because I often forget. I mean, I think everybody's intentions are good, but it's easy to forget. And if it's called out at the beginning, you can declare your conflict right then and move on with the rest of the discussion items. So that was one thing. And then the other thing was during the citizens' time to speak, there was a three-minute limit, just like we have. And, well, I know that that's up to the chair, but we typically have three minutes. But the timekeeper would call out when there were 30 seconds left of that person's speaking time, which I think's very considerate because then you can be wrapping up your thoughts rather than getting cut off in the middle of a sentence. So just two things to consider.
Thanks for that. Curtis?
Mary, I had a question for you as far as the Solid Waste District stuff. So there's a, I see mentioned often that the landfill has about 10 years lifetime. Is there any discussion about what that process looks like to decommission a landfill and, you know, anything related to, you know, what happens to the property? It's county property, right, Ruth? We're leasing that to the district?
That's my understanding, yes.
So that's probably what we do with it afterwards is probably more on our plate. But I'm just curious about that.
We are required by law to set aside so much money yearly to deal with the closure. And you do, as each sale fills up, you start the closure. So when, hopefully, we're doing everything we can to have the landfill last as long as we can because it's going to be a big increase to the cost of our citizens when it closes. So we'd like to keep it open as long as we can. Then it will be, you know, it will take some time, but it will be made so that we can use it. You can never build houses on it, but we could definitely use it for some other things once it has been rehabilitated. Does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am.
But we're saving the money. We have the money now to, for the cost of covering it.
Great.
Trash is expensive.
You know, the only thing I want to report on is the joint meeting we had with San Juan County last Monday, which I thought was, you know, a lot for show as, as we haven't done that and just, you know, kind of a, to get the two groups together. But I did think that it was productive. And I thought Terry did a good job chairing that meeting. And the agenda wasn't bad either. I think, you know, I would be interested in, you know, having something like that, you know, scheduled maybe for this fall, just to kind of keep us getting together with those guys and, you know, working through some of these issues. But we had the, the director of SITLA down to speak to folks, which was great because we're, you know, we're dealing with a lot of SITLA issues. And, you know, I think as far as, you know, a vision for the valley, you know, this, this regional transportation plan that we're working with UDOT on, you know, is a good place to, to work some of those things out. But I, I think that's, you know, I just encourage those kinds of discussions moving forward to make sure that we're working to be on the same page as much as possible. And that's all I have to report on.
Thanks for that. Terry?
Thank you. On the 5th of June, I went to the Moab Mosquito Abatement District meeting. And the Libby's doing an outstanding job there, trying to keep up with the floodwaters and taking care of the hatches that are coming out. And she's having some problems keeping an extra, or one of the people that, that was a vacancy that was filled, terminated himself. And so she's struggling with that, trying to find another employee to help her out. But they're doing good work, but really, really swamped and sort of over the top. Attended on the 6th, the Grand Water and Sewer System Agency, they are continuing to do well on the improvements up in Spanish Valley with the new sewer lines and so on and so forth. So they're all on track. A pretty tight organization, and they do, do a very good job. On the 10th, of course, as was mentioned, we had the meeting with San Juan County, their, their commissioners. That was a, I thought, a very good meeting. The commissioners were, I felt, very receptive to, to getting together with us to try and understand a little bit more clearly, both how to approach what's happening down in San Juan, I mean, in Spanish Valley, and how they can get together with us and contribute to making that a successful situation. And they also, on May 21st, passed a moratorium on all commercial development in northern San Juan County. I think as much in anticipation of what we're doing as in trying to help themselves understand exactly how to approach the problems that they, that they, that they are faced with. Then that meeting ran long, so I missed the Council on Aging meeting, unfortunately, which I am sorry to have done. Then on the 11th, I met with Conservation District. They're doing a good job taking care of conservation problems, you know, around the county. And they did administer a couple of grants, one to the youth garden and the other one to, gosh, I can't remember. I don't have that meeting notes with me. But, so they, they put out, I think, $7,000 worth of grants. And then in the evening, Planning Commission meeting was very interesting. They spent more time discussing the moratoria, and they approved a high-density overlay, which I believe we'll be dealing with today. And we, they also looked at another one, which I think we'll be dealing with as well, which will cause a pretty significant increase in the housing that, that was meant to happen with that. So that was good. Then that would be all I have. Thank you.
All right. Well, I don't have a whole lot. What did miss, the Joint Council meeting today with the Moab Area Travel Council. I tried to get here for that, but I didn't make it. And I heard that they were discussing about liaison, having a hard time getting there. I've missed a couple of meetings there. But summertime is really tough where I'm at. I'm going to try to hit more of those meetings. So have really anything else to say?
Do you have someone that's like your alternate? Is there an alternate on that board?
No, I don't.
You might want to consider doing that. Then you could just buzz them if you can't make it.
Yeah. That might be a good idea. The summertime is just really tough for me. But I'm going to devote my time more to it, so.
Thanks for that. Okay. Trail mix, we're going to hear from later in the meeting, but some exciting news is they opened a new connector trail from the Amasa Back parking lot. So that second dirt parking lot on Cane Springs Road, kind of by the tombstones where the base jumpers jumped, there's been a lot of improvements there with widening and toilets over the last few years, dumpsters. And now there's a trail that connects over to the cliffhanger trail from there. So bikers and hikers and climbers and trail runners and equestrians don't have to ride on the road there to connect to that trail. So that will improve a lot of safety out there as well as the user experience. I met with the Cemetery Board. They have had their eye on a graveyard specific backhoe. And so got some specific bids out for that, which means they are looking at trading in to backhoes. But if you know of anybody that's looking for a backhoe, if they want to go out there and talk to Robert, not only would it be a more useful tool, specific to what they're doing out there, it will also create more space for them so that they only have to store one backhoe instead of two. And then I also met with the Spanish Valley Pathway Committee. And we did a sort of site visit where we looked at some of the engineers' recommendations on the ground and just kind of right-of-way and fitting in a commuter bike path along Spanish Valley Drive. And the good news is it doesn't seem as difficult as what was originally expected. So there are some places where, you know, the, there's pretty small right-of-way and trying to fit a, a path in there is going to be a little tricky, but it's not as many spots as originally anticipated. So that's good news. And I believe that's all I've got. Elected official report. None? All right. Moving right along, council administrator report.
Okay. Briefly, I attended today the chamber luncheon at the request of the Travel Council Director who presented. You've been hearing the "Do It Like a Local" campaign, which is really more of a movement at the local level to have the locals really bought in on stewardship of our lands and so that we can educate our tourists to do the same. We believe our, our locals really are already stewards of the land. So anyway, that's what that's all about. Other than that, I've been very busy with the three study committee open houses for the change in form of government, which you will hear about a little later.
And that brings us to department reports. Item H, a 2018 facilities maintenance report. Sean?
Hi, guys. My first time presenting on you.
You're doing great so far.
Yeah. I feel like I'm not prepared. So first off, I want to start, I took over from Marvin DeTarmant in November. I just want to thank everyone that supported me and congratulated me on my position. So, thank you. First off, one of my main, my first things I did was make an emergency purchase of library roof. So the library roof is back to, back in order now, and sewer panels are back in place and using power again. The next thing I did was another emergency purchase, fortunately, sorry, of the Sheriff's Department HVAC system, which is in process.
Oh, Sean, can I, does that, the Sheriff's Department HVAC, is that over at the old library or is it the courthouse?
Yeah, I'll do it over.
Because last time I was at court.
You have some other disclosure? It's okay. You can go to court.
Last time I was observing court, the judge mentioned to me that the HVAC system there is horrible and unreliable. So I just wondered if this was going to be a fix for them, but apparently not.
Machines on this roof are getting old, and they're starting to need more and more maintenance. And hopefully, we can be proactive and start replacing them, replacing them before they die out. I'm hoping to keep track of their age and to require some maintenance. That needs, it's a long process, you know, to make sure it's in the budget, and then I hope they go off the bid. So I'm hoping that we can keep it under, under control and not get out there with machines that's still in there. They're all about the same age. And they say that they last 25 years and they're gone. And that's what happened to the Sheriff's Department. They have, they have remedied, remedied a little bit, but they, what they do is, see, what it is, is working half, half to pass. And so what happens is, when it's trying to keep up with the whole building, it freezes over, which quits producing any flow there. And so what they've been doing is they go in, they, when they see it freezing off, they shut it off and let it, let the winds defrost, and then they shut it back, turn it back on, which makes it so they don't produce more flow there and freeze it off. So they've been surviving over there. It's been working. So? Yes. So, yeah, so that, that, those parts should be going to the grease and holding. The next, next project I've got going on is the NIC regroup, which you guys will be exploring this, later this afternoon, which will be, which will make it so we can get a new roof on that, on the Moab Information Center, which has been meaning since I started. So that'll be a nice little project. And it's been, it's been super, CHA's been super patient with us. And we try and fix it, and early fix it, keep, keep it on there. Like this last year, it just got so bad out of hand, they just, they plugged it out. Hopefully, we can get that roof fixed and not have that happen. Jerk, or like right here. Hold on, any questions on that one? Next project, I have also two more RFPs out for EMS bus barn and EMS training center.
Rips.
Their rips, sorry. Yes, their rips. So bus barn, you guys, I think last month did a walkthrough. And it was, it started to leak a little bit, and so, so that, that's out to bid right now. That should close on July 11th, along with the EMS Training Center, which is on the other.
Actually, it works better on the edge. I'm sorry. Yeah, it is one of those edge ones. It bounces off the edge.
All right.
You could speak into that mic up there, maybe.
You'll see that there, okay? All right, how's that? So, yeah. For both those buildings, they were budgeted for $50,000 last year by Marvin Day. I'm hoping, I don't know if they're going to, I don't know if they're going to come in under that, but we'll see. So, but those will close on 11th, on July 11th, and we'll be able to see the prices on those. Next year, I Next year, I need to probably budget some money for the museum roof. We've got some leaks over the museum roof as well. Lot of roofs, guys. Sorry. And, uh, and, uh, and possibly some repairs, some semi-large repairs to the Grand Center. So, which will, is kind of part of the Moab Information Center budget. For now, that's, that's all I got.
Great.
Busy on the roof.
Yes.
Any questions from the council?
Thank you.
Very good report.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, can I run out on the agenda?
Uh, under department reports, please. Yes.
What's that noise?
So, I appreciate the time. Also, I want to say thanks to council chair for giving me the heads up on the backhoe. I've got the fleet manager on it right now. And we'll take a look and see what we got. So I do want to thank those that were able to attend the Safety Incentive Program barbecue. Appreciate that. I know that most of your schedules are busy, so those that were able to be there, myself and the staff, appreciate it and your support. Couple of things I just want to say real quick. Uh, we had a vacancy in our labor position and that was filled Monday. We hired Troy Backus, and so he started Monday and, and he's off and running. Thursday, I did attend the CIB meeting in Vernal. And, uh, probably no big surprise, but, uh, Grand County did get the, uh, $166,000 in grant to perfect those D-road easements on Sittler.
Congratulations.
Yeah, great.
And had a lot of help with that roof. It was very helpful and, and others also on Sittler.
And Chris.
Chris Baird. Our Arbor and Heckla project, reconstruction project, will be going out to bid this week. And, uh, I too, uh, am hoping the bids come in. Good. So, we will have a pre-construction, uh, mandatory pre-con, pre-bid, rather, mandatory pre-bid conference on June 27th. Uh, that'll be at 10:00 AM at the Roadshed, starting out there. If anybody would like to be there, you're more than welcome to. I won't be there, but, uh, Glenn will be there. Uh, our engineer of records, Jones and DeMille staff will be there. And then from there, they will go onsite and look at the project with any potential bidders. And that's mandatory for the bidders. I think I'll just keep it at that.
Thank you.
Since I kind of jumped in. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is agency reports. Item I, change in the form of government study committee update.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
I received a text from Steven Starks, who is the chair of the forming, the change in form of government study committee, asking me, since he's cut up in a meeting, um, if I would give the report, the update to council. So I'll use his words. "We would report that the open houses have been a smashing success. We have had phenomenal turnout and feel fortunate to have a great community response. We have an event planned on July 4th, 2019, to have a table or a booth that's at the celebration on Swanee Park, um, so that people can chat about the process. And also, I know that they are offering the survey at that opportunity. Lastly, if anyone would like a survey, they are able to email or stop by one of our meetings to have a, a survey copy or ask for my office. And they meet this Friday at noon, and then they don't meet again for about a month. The surveys must be turned in by July 5th, 2019. We appreciate also being able to utilize Ms. Dillon's priceless, oh, let me read that again. Priceless assistance during the process."
Thank you. Did that make it into the minutes? Uh, thanks for relaying that. Next up, citizens to be heard. This is the portion of the meeting for citizens to speak on an item that is not on the agenda. If you would like to speak on one of the agenda items, we have these cards and, uh, by the door. If you'd fill out your name and what item you'd like to speak on. But in the meantime, are there any citizens for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. I don't see any presentations. General business. Greg.
Uh, point of, point of order. I, I would move to, uh, bring agenda item Y before the council at this time.
Motion made by Greg Halliday to move discussion item Y on low-flying tourist aircraft.
I'll second it.
Uh, seconded by Curtis Wells. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed?
I, I meant, I meant to raise my hand with a aye.
Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to Y. Alice Drogen, if you would, uh, join us up front. Let me just pull this.
I'm afraid you'll have to use that mic.
If you don't mind introducing yourself and taking it away.
Thanks. Thank you. I did have a brief speech prepared, but I can't find it now. Good evening, all of you. I'm Alice Drogen, representing the Castle Valley Town Council. And I'd like to thank all of you for the opportunity to let our voice be heard. I would like to just read this statement and then I'm happy to answer questions if anybody has them. And, um, I'm here tonight to talk with the county about two things, both involving recent reports of low-flying aircraft in and around Castle Valley. The first situation is the unwelcome loud noise made by aircraft flying over the residential part of Castle Valley. And secondly, the dangers of aircraft flying below the rim, low in the Colorado River corridor and landing in inappropriate spots. So first, I'll address the noise issue. So, Castle Valley is a relatively small, narrow valley with high, steep walls. When aircraft fly over the valley, it becomes an echo chamber with the noise reverberating around off the walls. This is unsettling to residents, many of whom move to Castle Valley for the peace and quiet that we normally have. So I'm not talking, and nobody is complaining, about the airlife helicopter that crosses the valley once or twice a week. Um, no one's complaining about that. What the Castle Valley Town Council is hearing is a concern that sightseeing tourist flights have become much more frequent this year alone. We used to have a flight every so often. Now, on weekends, we frequently will have a morning of just non-stop noise. And, um, Easter week and Memorial Day weekend, were just horrendous. So people are worried that this is just the beginning. And, you know, if it continues unabated, the quiet will be gone. We do recognize that as a municipality and as a county, we don't have jurisdiction over the airspace. So we're not demanding anything, but what we are asking for is courtesy. We're asking that tour operators and other flightseers be apprised of the situation and asked to skirt Castle Valley and not fly over the residential section. That's the northern end of the valley. It's possible to enjoy lots of amazing scenery up there without flying over the valley and making a big commotion that upsets people. I, I know it's great. I've done it myself. Um, it's, the scenery is wonderful, but it is very upsetting to people below. The second issue involves recent sightings of aircraft flying low in the Colorado River Canyon and the illegal landing on Parry at Mesa and the unauthorized landing on a private airstrip in Professor Valley. These were not local pilots or planes, but they are part of a growing tourist industry that it would behoove Grand County to get a handle on now before it gets dangerously out of control. As a solution to both of these problems, we ask the Grand County Council to explore the idea of designating specified locations like airports and heliports for takeoff and landing of aircraft. Of course, emergencies such as medical evacuations would be excluded. So the county does have jurisdiction over where aircraft can take off and land. And I believe you'll find that most counties do exercise this control just for safety purposes. This would allow airport operators to make sure that pilots get the message about where they can and cannot land, and also to remind them nicely to be courteous about not flying over residential areas or creating traffic, traffic hazards in the river corridor. We look forward to working with Grand County to find ways that allow us to live together as good neighbors. Thank you again for listening. Questions?
Thank you for that. And it's my understanding that any kind of, uh, commercial air activity is limited to the airport in Grand County. So any kind of?
I had heard there was an ordinance, but I could not find it. I looked on the, um, website and I couldn't find it, so.
Uh, we also do have a good neighbor policy that specifically calls out, uh, a request for a height over the national parks and, um, and recrea, recreation areas around that. And I think it would be, uh, easy enough to add residential areas as one of those spots that, although it's not enforceable, it's kind of hide, called out of, as a good neighbor. It would be great if you don't.
We, we know the pilots are good guys and they're not, like, trying to annoy people. I think that most people want to do the right thing. And so hopefully, we can just all get along and it'll be good.
Yes.
It would make our lives on the town council a lot easier, too.
You just tell them the ATV policy.
I know you guys in town are dealing with your own noise issues, too. Is, um, Mr. Judge Hill here?
He was not able to attend.
I don't know.
He did write a letter.
I've been communicating with him via email or have spoken with him on the phone. I just wanted to.
And did you see the letter he, in the packet?
Yes, I did. And we're, you know, we're totally aware of all that stuff. We are not, you know, trying to make, uh, make things difficult for anybody. We're trying to make things easier.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Kingsley, was there a comment?
Yes, I may. If anybody does witness military aircraft in the Colorado River corridor, please give me a call. Last year, when a, um, C-130 was flying through the river corridor, I was called and given the exact time. I called my son and those pilots will not do it here.
All right. We got Joe on the case.
I got it.
Good to know. Thank you. Thank you, Alice.
Thank you.
You know, these ATVs turn.
Uh, wait.
These airplanes have slip tires.
We've got a big agenda. We gotta keep zipping through. But, thank you. Moving on is, uh, Sean again. Approving proposed bid awards for the reroute of the Moab Information Center. Did we lose Sean? Going once? Going twice? Uh, I would entertain a motion to postpone or table? Oh.
I would like to table it to get an opportunity. Since he's my direct, uh, can you just table it early in the meeting while I'm getting in here, please?
So moved.
I know that we table.
All those in favor tabling? Item J?
Aye.
See, we got one, two, three, four, five. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, item K, approving proposed Four Corners Community Behavioral Health, Inc., fiscal year 2020 area plan. Karen Dolan, executive director of Four Corners.
Hello. I'm Karen Dolan. I'm here to present our area plan. This is, um, the counties of the local mental health and substance abuse authority for the safety of the population. And each year, we write an area plan, which is like our bid grant. It's in statute. We write about all the different services we're gonna provide for the year in Carbon Emery and Grand County. So our board has already approved this plan and signed off on it. And our board is made up of a county councilperson or county commissioner from each of the counties and three citizen members from each of the counties. So we have a 12-member board. So I'm here to answer any questions and to get your signature for our plan.
Rory?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the FY 2020 area plan for the Four Corners Community Behavioral Health, Inc., and authorize all council members to sign all associated documents. It was a little different.
Surprised, Jay.
Make sure you're paying attention.
Motion made by Rory Paxman?
Second.
Seconded by Curtis Wells. Any discussion? Oh, that was pretty painful. Thank you for all that you do.
You want us to sign it now?
Appreciate, uh, the services that you offer our county and the region. And with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes unanimously.
Great. So our inter-local agreement says that every county commissioner and county councilperson in the three counties will sign.
Great. Thank you. And while that goes around, I'd entertain a motion to un-table item J. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sean, you're up. Uh, approving proposed bid award for the reroute of the Moab Information Center.
Do I need to present it or?
Uh, please.
Okay. So, uh, we've received, okay, so we went out to bid, sealed bid package for a process. And, uh, we received three bids back. One was for, uh, one was for $99,225, $100 from progressive roofing. The next one was Warburton's, which was, uh, $89,336, which Warburton's also put in their stipulation that if we did it after Labor Day, they would knock $8,000 off. I think that's, you're aware of that. North Face Roofing, uh, $82,400.
Which one do you like?
The, uh, between me and the, the committee that we put together, we all voted on Warburton's, which ends up being the, the.
And we got the time to wait till after Labor Day?
Yes. And I also contacted the other contractors and there was no guarantee that they were gonna be able to start before that time. So, one of them said maybe, but he was behind schedule.
Gotcha. Jalen?
I would like to make a motion to award the bid for the reroute of the Moab Information Center to Warburton's Roofing and Metal at the discounted post-Labor Day amount of $81,336 and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Seconded by, a motion made by Jalen Hawkes, seconded by Mary McGann. Any further discussion? Was there some mention of, like, a deal with the Grand Center, too? Did you hint at something like that?
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. So that roof, that, it was budgeted for $50,000. But, uh, also, the Grand Center's roof was also budgeted for $50,000 for the roof. But we're seeing, with the prices we're seeing, neither roof would be able to be redone in those amounts of money. So, um, uh, I got with Chris Baird and, um, Billene, Billene Strickland. And, um, to confirm that she was okay with us moving funds from her roofs to get the NIC redone. And, uh, Chris Baird said that we could do that being it's still the same, which is the RTC. And Chris Baird said that we could do that, being it's still the same, which is the R2C. Yes. So, the idea was to move the $50,000 from the Grand Center over to the MIC, giving it $100,000, which will easily cover $81 something dollars.
Great. I like it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is item L. Approving proposed interlocal trail agreement with San Juan County. Maddie Logowitz, Trail Manager, Active Transportation and Trails official.
Actually, I have some maps of you guys melting, being a little distracted.
They didn't, because I looked.
So, I'm joining Maddie as her supervisor and one of the initiators of this ILA. Admittedly, was not involved in much of the writing or back-and-forth editing between Maddie and the county attorney's office, so I am quite appreciative to their, for their efforts. But, basically, the impetus for this ILA is to ensure that Grand County staff and their volunteers have the authorization to continue maintaining trails in the LaSalle Mountains that cross into San Juan County. So, these are trails that were built by Trail Mix and Trail Mix volunteers in conjunction with Forest Service. Now that this, now that the county has taken on staff for transportation and trails, I think it is very prudent to just make sure that we have this ILA in place. You know, I think there could be additional opportunities for collaboration in trail development that are motorized, they are motorized. So, this, in some ways, just kind of sets a foundation for future collaboration. Thanks for that.
I would move to approve the proposed interlocal agreement with San Juan County regarding the planning, development, and maintenance of non-motorized trails serving Grand County residents and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Curtis Wells, seconded by Mary McGann. Any further discussion? Jalen?
Question. Do you have an idea of about how many miles of trail we're talking about in the two different areas?
Well, there's no non-motorized trails in this area currently, but that area's managed by the Melville and office rather than the Selloville office, and they're in the recognition of it. And that's-
But even the LaSalle's, as far as trails that we anticipate Grand County employees and volunteers working on, maybe that's-
A lot.
Yeah, I don't actually have an estimate. But we've had an agreement, a caution agreement, basically since last year, and so they actually reimbursed us for labor up there, and we assess them with whatever projects that their company's working on. So, we usually, rather than taking the lead, like we do on the BLM planning areas around here, we services to their projects and whatever trails that they are helping to talk about here.
Who in Maddie says "their"? She's referring to the Forest Service, not San Juan County. I like it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, thank you. Next up, item M. Approving 911 systems. Matt Cincero's IT Director.
Hi, everybody. Told you I'd be back pretty quick, right? I was up here with you last meeting, talked about 911 system and the status of it, and I'd be happy to go over it all again with you if you want. But since that time, I did go up to the UCA offices in Salt Lake twice, went up once to review our quote, make sure that it's in line with everything else, and then I went to a board meeting last week. With that, at the board meeting, they did approve for us to go ahead with the 911 system as quoted from CenturyLink, and that would be a cost of $123,741.66 to be essentially reimbursed to us through that purchase. In your packet, there's also a letter, an email exchange that I had after that. That number there does not include about $7,700 worth of the quote that we had here. It was, they inadvertently overlooked it. That will be going back to the UCA board at their next meeting. I anticipate that they'll approve it without any consternation there, but there is a small outstanding glitch with that.
And that's reimbursable as well?
Yeah. And like I said, the board there, they reviewed ours as well as with Emery County, San Juan County, and Fox Elder. And all four of these counties were all going into this Davis County Multino, which is a configuration of 911 answering points, and they unanimously approved everybody's. So, like I said, I think that, you know, the director, they called me after I brought this up to them, and they apologized about it and have their commitment to bring it back up to them. Obviously, they can't speak for the board on whether they're going to approve that or not, but just the general nature that we were received at, I don't think they're going to have any issues or corrections.
Should we get that cleared up before our vote, or is it, do we need to break them apart, or what makes the most sense in your eyes?
In, in what I talked to them about with it, the way that they actually approved it, the director actually read this letter that you have here.
Where is the letter?
It's in the red folder.
Oh, well, that's right. I did look at it.
And there's one there that has, it's on UCA letterhead there. The director did read the number, but when it came down to approving it, they said as quoted. So, again, I think it's a small technicality. I don't think it's going to be a huge issue. And honestly, by the time that their next meeting is going, we're still going to be running the ropes with CenturyLink. It's going to be easily six to nine months before we see this happening again. There's a lot of diligence that needs to happen before, and so I think that it will be-
Mary?
I move to approve the quotes for the 911 equipment and network cost and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Terry Morse. Any further discussion? Jalen?
So, in the agenda summary, there's an ongoing monthly network of 2630, 2,630. That's our responsibility, and also the command mobile station cost is our responsibility. Okay.
Exactly. But in that agenda summary, also should note, I did write in there a cost for the third position at $19,774.07. That effectively goes away, because I knew that there was a discrepancy happening on Friday when I put it in. Couldn't pinpoint where it was at. People were out of the office and otherwise. So, I went ahead and threw that in there just in case, but that 19 is gone, and it's just the 123.731 that could mount for the command post ongoing. But then there's also, that 123 is actually going to go up to a little over 130 or so. All said and done, I'd save $700 back in there.
All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for staying on top of this. Next up, item N. Approving 2019 certified tax rates. Chris Baird, clerk auditor.
All right. So, every June, we're mandated by the state to approve the current year's certified tax rates. And the way that this works is it's generally based off of the budget that was adopted last December. And since we didn't go through truth and taxation, we're limited in setting that budget based on the collections from last year, which include new growth. And so, that's what's before you now, is just certifying the tax rate at the highest budgeted amount that we can statutorily. So, it's sort of a housecleaning item. We did see some new growth, especially in some of the centrally assessed values, and so the tax rate did go down just a little bit again this year, for these particular taxes, anyway, because the values increased and the budget stayed relatively the same. So, we're going to go down between 1.26% and 1.31%, depending on the particular levy Anybody have any other questions?
No questions for the clerk auditor.
I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the final 2019 Grand County certified tax rate as presented on proposed form PT 693 for Grand County Operations Library Assessing and Collecting and General Obligations, Bond Debt, and Authorize the Chair to Sign All Associated Documents.
Motion made by Mary McGann.
Second.
Seconded by Terry Morse. Any further discussion? Always nice to see those tax rates dropping. Thank you for that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next up is item O. Approving Grand County School District Community Liaison in Grand County School District to act as the point person and agency to coordinate efforts to address intergenerational poverty issues in Grand County. Councilmember Hawkes.
Okay. So, as I mentioned in my council report, I met with several people at the state level, a couple of people at the regional level, and then someone at the local level, plus myself, and Mallory Nassau, who is actually the Grand County School District's community coordinator, not liaison, as I had written in the agenda summary. Basically, just a very brief history. I thought this was worth putting on as an action item rather than consent agenda, just to make the council and the public aware that there is still effort going on to address the intergenerational poverty issue in Grand County. Couple of years ago, the lieutenant governor wanted to begin an intergenerational poverty effort to address issues in the counties, and it turns out that 13 counties in Utah, Grand County is one of those, has a very high intergenerational poverty rate. And so, we were one of the first counties to be offered the chance to apply for a grant, a planning grant to come up with a plan, with the help of some of Zachariah's staff, one of Zachariah's staff in particular, in Economic Development Department, and a board of nonprofit leaders. We have juvenile court judge on the committee. We had a lot of really sharp people on this committee, and they did come up with a very good plan, and Caitlin from Zachariah's department made our incoherent thought processes. She turned those into a coherent plan that we submitted to the state. Since then, the effort in Grand County sort of came to a standstill until about a year and a half ago, mainly because the kind of, the scale of effort that the state was wanting from each county, including Grand, really wasn't doable without some funding. Yes, they did find grants that people could apply for, but there weren't people who hadn't already committed all of their full-time work life to grants for their own organization. So, without that kind of support, the effort sort of came to a standstill. A year and a half ago, Grand County School District came up with some private funding to fund a person, Mallory Nassau, who's the community coordinator, and it is her job to coordinate with people who would use services in the county that would help boost the success of students at the high school, well, in all three schools. And so, she has now taken this over with my support. And what they would like to do, I actually think it's a very good way to address it because she has funding. She can write the grant. She can liaise with community members. She can coordinate with community leaders. And if you read through the agendas, not the agenda summary, but the document that I attached to it, the key leader board findings, there's been some pretty significant work going on in Grand County, and the next steps are to pick an area and work on that, find ways to address that specific concrete things. So, the state is happy to have the school district be the point person on this, and I'm happy to do that. I will still be, the council agreed to have me as the council liaison on that key leader board, so I will still keep a hand in that. There may be times when grants can only be applied for through the county. Mallory's willing to write those if we can work out a way to run the funding. So, that brings us to this point now. As I said, the state's happy to let her do that. They just wanted the council's kind of formal blessing, so I told them I would put it on the council agenda this week. And with that explanation, I move to approve Grand County School District's Community Coordinator in Grand County School District to act as the point person and agency to coordinate efforts to address intergenerational poverty issues in Grand County and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Jalen Hawkes, seconded by Mary McGann. Any further discussion? Please.
Reading through the document, it was eye-opening and sobering. So, if you haven't had a chance to read it, I would highly recommend, and I recommend the people in the audience to go to the website and read the document.
Yes. It's been a long time coming, and kudos to the state and the governor's office for recognizing this need and for all the hard work that's gone in locally to get to this point. It's commendable, for sure. And with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, item P. Adopting proposed ordinance approving amendments to the high-density housing overlay ordinance to clarify standards and procedures and correct a presumed mapping error in the adopted map. Postponed from June 4, 2019, which I believe was also postponed from the one before that.
The meeting before that was a public hearing.
Oh, right. And I do have requests for citizen comment, and because of our postponement, I said that we would entertain that. So, I don't know if you want to get us started first or start with that. We're calling the county attorney on the line.
Christina Sloan, you are on the line in the county council meeting. We're just getting started on the agenda item regarding high-density housing overlay ordinance.
Sorry if we cut you off.
No, that's okay. I was actually going to advise that we listen to the citizen comment while we try to get the county attorney on the line. Now that we have her, I'll let you decide.
Sure. Received a comment request from Mark Horwitz for item P.
Breathe. Firstly, I'd like to say I would be deeply, very grateful and deeply appreciated if you would recommit your resolve of one year ago to beg the citizens of this county to observe the laws with regards to fireworks. Mary McGann suggested that. Your next meeting is two days before the 4th of July. That's a very important issue to me. Without trying to be redundant, and perhaps you've seen my comments in the package, I hope you have, I'd like to quote Randy Day by saying what a struggle it is sometimes to have only three minutes to address issues that will affect properties that we've lived in for 20 years and will affect those properties for the next 20 years, but I will do my best Without referring directly to item P on the agenda tonight, I'll say what is glaringly apparent to me is that there's a real problem with the notification process that has been specifically applied to this situation. The, without, you know, I don't want to even mention, I don't have time to mention several of the issues, but one was the notification was sent in the mail, but although I have property that it is directly adjacent, and so does my mother, Mona, neither of us have received a notification at all. So, I'm quite well aware of the situation, so that's okay with me. But I think for the future, I would- But I think for the future, I would beg you, I would ask you to please direct the planning commission to make a more effective notification process. One of the things that you'll be commenting, one of the details in the program tonight is that a developer is responsible or obligated to notify for properties. I just don't think that's a good idea at all. There's certainly, certain, you know, the sign is in the weeds. That benefits a developer. So I'm saying, I'm asking you to direct the planning commission to develop a more effective process for notification, because I think every single time one of these HDH things comes up in a neighborhood, somebody is going to be blown away. And referring directly to item P, you know, we've had the details and the clarification of the map. They've been mixed up for so long, and each time this meeting happens, it's like, well, shouldn't they be separate when they aren't? Okay. I will say an appropriate amendment to tonight's motion would be to approve a mapping error that was made by including Lot 8 of the May Estates, which is plat restricted from further subdivision. I would ask the county attorney to tell us how that lot could possibly be included in the future, given that plat restriction. And with that, I will say, thank you for all you do.
Thank you for your comments, and duly noted, and maybe a little clarity on the future of plat restrictions.
Yeah, I think we'll get to that soon.
All right.
I think it is helpful to separate the two items that are in front of you tonight. The first are the set amendments to the High Density Housing Overlay Ordinance, the second is the, that's associated with it. And so we'll get into those, but before I do, if I may, I would just like to respond to Mr. Horowitz's comments about notification. They are duly noted as well from staff, and we are actually presenting to the planning commission, well, we'll have a discussion about our notification procedures in the land use code, not just for the High Density Housing Overlay, but for all development review and application decisions as early as next week. They don't have, it should be a clear idea of what changes are going to be made right now, but we are going to embark on that conversation, and we are doing what we can to step up our notification efforts. So it is our goal to be as transparent and communicate with the public responsible, and that's an ongoing process of improvement. So apologize for any grievances that may be out there in the community, but we are certainly trying to improve.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for that.
So with respect to the motion in front of you, we went through many of the proposed changes during the public hearing, and the reason why it was not, why the county attorney recommended postponing of the vote during the last phase of our scheduled meeting is because we wanted to finalize some of the amendments to the application submission, review, and approval process, and we have fully worked through those, and so I will just kind of highlight the main thrust of those amendments. When we originally presented the High Density Housing Overlay concept to you, we staff framed it as an opportunity for the county to have a high level of certainty in seeing a project built that was very similar, very, very similar to what was actually proposed, reviewed, and approved as the type of these overlays was applied. And we then needed to clarify that there are multiple elements of this approval, some legislative, some administrative. And in that process, we inadvertently took out this notion of a master plan, where somebody comes to the county, they request this overlay to be applied to their parcel, and the master plan indicates what they actually intend to build, and then that gets reviewed and approved and recorded alongside the overlay being attached to their specific parcel. In the version of the updated ordinance that the planning commission reviewed and recommended to you, that site planning component, the master plan component that would ultimately get recorded, came out, and that was because we were really trying to clarify this legislative step of applying the overlay to a specific parcel from the administrative step of ultimately getting a preliminary plat approved. But it was clear in the first couple of applications that the planning commission and I, from the council and the public, still really wanted that master plan component for that certainty, and so the county attorney and I spent a tremendous amount of time, you know, researching this issue and making sure that the amendments to the ordinance that are reflected in the version in front of you tonight and that you would vote on tonight include that component. So I would invite the county attorney to add any additional, you know, commentary on that, and then I can touch on a couple of other minor amendments.
Great. Jalen?
Could you address Mr. Horowitz's comment about Lot 8 being deed restricted to not be developable? Did I get that right, Mark?
So there's a note on the plat of that parcel that says the parcel cannot be further subdivided. So I would certainly invite the county attorney to provide comments on this, but I can just give you, you know, staff's perspective on it and how this played out in the rest of the High Density Housing Overlay creation and adoption process. Very early on, we acknowledged that there were parcels and subdivisions included in the boundaries of the HDHO districts that had HOAs and CCNRs that would prevent, you know, additional development that would otherwise be enabled by the High Density Housing Overlay district. In some very obvious cases, we removed the subdivision, but in many others, we said, well, those CCNRs are contractual agreements between the property owners and the HOA. They are subject to change. Grand County is not party to those contractual agreements, and so, you know, if somebody came to us with an application, you know, we'd likely look at whether there were, you know, restrictions from the HOA or the CCNRs, or notes on a platted subdivision that would prevent subdivision, and that would be part of our review. But that you didn't have the capacity or the time to look at every, you know, title record of every parcel that was included in the overlay boundaries to determine if there were, you know, restrictions on development that would otherwise be supported by the High Density Housing Overlay. So I certainly appreciate the issue that has been raised on that lot, and, you know, I can't tell you with certainty that this parcel could ever be further subdivided because it would have to go through, you know, a formalized process of removing that plat note, which would include, you know, approvals from other owners in the subdivision and the public hearings, and again, the county attorney can speak to this. So I'm not giving you advice on what to do, but I would just share that to give you a sense of how we dealt with that issue and the logic that we used when creating the overlay boundaries, acknowledging that there are probably other parcels in the overlay boundaries that have restrictions on them regarding subdivision, but we couldn't address it at that scale when we were developing the documents.
Christina, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I have a couple of things I want to say there. We can analyze the files of every single parcel. I think that this one might come to our attention, and one other one came to our attention that we did not include any boundary for a similar reason, and it's because of a plat restriction. For that reason, I recommend the council not include the parcel with the plat restriction. There is a process for, I mean, it's a plat, and it's all regulated by state statute. It does not require the owner to have every single owner of a lot on that plat, but it does require a very honest or formidable notice, process, the housekeeping process, and the council decides to reduce the subdivision restriction. I'd rather the owner, you know, strictly to be included in the boundary lines. I would rather the owner go through that process first, and then ask the council for inclusion in the boundary. The reason for that is, with burden on the, you know, is to be aware, and in my opinion, now that we know that there's a plat restriction, it shouldn't be the county's responsibility or the neighborhood's responsibility to worry about that. Now that we know about it, it isn't. You know, I've been requested by my councilmembers to further explain the difference between a deed restriction and a plat note. So a plat note on a plat, that is, how we require a higher range of code to include it. That might be a public domain agreement, for example, that's a very common one, and that requires by our means to get approval for the subdivision. Plat notes, the county is responsible for enforcing. However, there are lots of deed restrictions that are on plats, and the county is necessarily responsible, and at the same time, there's a little bit higher burden for, since the county had already approved a subdivision restriction, and in assumption, the county is, it's sort of, that requires this gray area versus, and the county is in refusal for, or moving a part of that process to remove a deed restriction like the subdivision restriction, that's a deed restriction. But the council is now involved in removing it, versus a deed restriction that occurs by deed or even in CCRs, covenants that are courting against subdivision, those can be privately handled outside of the county. We don't actually have, as far as I know, Zachariah, you can correct me, any code in our land use code or other ordinance that prevents us from enforcing private restrictions, but it's not something I would ever advocate for. A lot of counties actually have ordinances on their books that say the county shall not enforce private deed restrictions. As far as I know, we don't have it, but that again, would be something that would be included in a deed or in covenant. Here, we have a note on a plat that prohibits subdivision, and in my opinion, is problematic. So I do recommend that you approve without the one piece being included.
So to be clear, Lot 8 is actually not the lot that is in question as far as adding it to the overlay. If you decided to heed the advice of the county attorney, you would actually be adjusting the HDHO boundaries to remove the portion of Lot 8 that is included in the overlay. But the request in front of you is to include the flag lot that was inadvertently left out of the initial overlay boundaries. Does that make sense?
So I guess I wasn't aware of that. So you're saying that the parcel that's encumbered by the subdivision restriction is already in the boundary?
A portion of it is.
That's the hillside one on the slope, yeah.
Basically, everything sort of closer to the highway from the utility.
Okay. Well, just for the record, I have no opinion either way on the flag lot. That's certainly up to council.
And then in terms of the flag lot, the notes mentioned that there were four properties that are left out, but there's five highlighted in blue.
Say that again?
I'm pretty sure that it says that there were four properties inadvertently left out, and then there's, am I mistaken about that part?
No, just that there were four parcels that were to be included.
Yes.
Three are shown in the original, in the map that was adopted, and so the lot that is being presented to you today for inclusion is one of those four lots that were identified, but not included in the adopted map. So in your packet, in the electronic version, it's page 196, you can see we've highlighted the parcel in question.
186 or 196?
1212 South Jackson Street.
186.
196. 196. At least on my version.
Maybe there's more.
The map is on 196.
Right, but my, those highlighted, there's five parcels highlighted in blue. The corner lot, the flag lot, two lots in between.
That corner lot is, was not part of the discussion.
Gotcha, okay. And that corner lot is currently included?
Yeah, the map is also on 186. There are two versions, or two copies of it in there.
So we have to have two separate motions?
I would recommend two separate motions, because I don't know where, I mean, I don't know where everyone is at on the two categories of amendments, and I just think it would be cleaner for the record to separate out the amendments to the ordinance from the amendment to the map.
All right. Which one should we tackle first? The amendments to the ordinance?
Yes.
All right, any, I guess we start with the motion. We're going by Robert's rules.
So I move to adopt the proposed ordinance approving the amendments to the High Density Housing Overlay Ordinance to clarify standards and procedures, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Terry Morris. Seconded by Mary McGann. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries six to one with Councilmember Hawks in opposition.
I would just like to say your respect about the vote. I want to extend a great deal of gratitude to the county attorney for all the help she has provided in updating the ordinance.
Kudos to her for the due diligence.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, this leaves the question of a presumed mapping error in the adopted map. And just for clarity, that the map that we're referencing on 186 or 196, do we need the numbers included on that, since we've been referencing Lot 8 and Flag Lot, et cetera? Is everyone clear on what's being discussed?
No.
So I think there are two issues. First issue is, you had the flag lot, that staff, staff's position is that it was inadvertently left out. The second issue is this Lot 8 plat restriction, plat note, do you want to remove that portion of Lot 8 that was included from the boundary, or do you want to include it that was already included?
Question?
Please.
I want to make sure I understood what Christina said. She said that she recommended we remove. That's what she said, okay.
Well, right now, it's not included at all.
No, it is.
Oh, it is.
It is included.
A portion of Lot 8 is included in the adopted. A portion of Lot 8 is included in the adopted map.
So, we should remove Lot 8?
Remove Lot 8, correct.
So, this is included in the.
The partial one, yeah.
And if you want to look at the plat, where the platnot is highlighted, that is on page 203 of the electronic. So, the crosshatched portion is the portion of that lot that is essentially included in the adopted H D H O map. So, you can decide to leave it in, take it out, but the parcel in question, staff has brought forward to you is shown on 186.
The flag lot.
I suppose you could even separate out those motions if you wanted to.
Sure. I think that you're correct, that there's going to be a lot more instances where, you know, what's actually recorded on the plat wasn't actually taken into consideration in the overlay, and so, I'd rather cross those bridges when they come up. The overlay won't be applied until someone requests that, and so, I'm not necessarily eager to start removing things now until those requests are before us. That's where I'm at.
I, I would rather see it removed now, so someone doesn't make the effort of reading the ordinance, going through the whole process, applying for it, and then finding out they can't.
Well, I feel like ignorance is bliss, but since we're no longer ignorant of that, I, I would like to follow the counsel of our attorney and remove it.
I agree with you, with Jaylen and Mary. I think we ought to deal with it now, because it's in front of us and we have the opportunity to do it.
Mary?
I'll make a motion. I move to remove Lot 8 from the high-density overlay and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Jaylen Hawks. Any further discussion? Is that motion clean enough for record?
I would say specify Lot 8 on the May Estates.
On the May Estates.
On the which?
May Estates.
On, with the addition of May Estates. Did I say that correctly?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, all those opposed. Motion passes six to one with Clapper abstaining, or in opposition. Which still leaves us with what we are gathered here for today, the flag lot in question. Jaylen?
Do you want a motion or more discussion?
I believe Robert says we need a motion before we discuss, but, okay.
And the address of this parcel is 1212 South Jackson Street.
Going once. Going twice. There's no motion to be made here on.
So, this, wait, hold on one second. This is item.
P.
Item P.
Yes.
So, we're asking for a motion to correct the mapping error.
And include, and include 12, what?
Correction, which included.
What was the address?
So, if you go to page 186 of Jackson Street.
Well, to open it up for discussion, I will make a motion.
Motion made by Mary McGann.
I move to adopt the proposed, I move to correct a presumed mapping error in the adopted map, map for 1212 South Jackson Street, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Mary McGann. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Curtis Wells. Discussion.
Jaylen?
Well, I spent some time, of course, reading over the very well-written documents that came from the owner, developer of that lot, very well put together, make total sense, and I do have confidence in our planning department that it is indeed what they consider to be an error. However, and I also spent some time listening to the workshop back in December, and, well, it does mention four lots, but there's the little lot right there, just in front of the flagship lot that we're talking about. So, if someone were following the discussion and they heard, yeah, let's include the four lots, there were four lots without the flagship, and the fact that that flat flagship, that flag lot, never appeared on a map until we're now trying to correct it, I just feel like the public and myself, I'm kind of caught unaware, it's not that I'm necessarily opposed to it, but it doesn't seem very transparent, through no fault of the developer, planning was all an accident, but it's not been clear on, in any discussion or on any map, that that was to be included. So, I feel like we owe it to the public to, if we want to include it at a later time, I think it needs to go through a separate process, because it wasn't very transparent having it on there in the first place, if that makes sense.
I would just like to note that included in your packet is a letter that was sent to residents and property owners in that neighborhood. There were signs placed in the neighborhood that indicated there are some questions about the effectiveness of those signs pointing people to a particular issue at hand, but staff has made, you know, meaningful efforts to try to inform residents in this neighborhood.
So, I'm.
I don't doubt that.
I'm missing something here, because on the map that I'm looking at, unless I'm totally wrong, it shows that that lot actually is included in the overlay.
The flag goal, the flag goal part of it, but not the actual body of the lot.
No, I don't know. Would you like to look at this?
Sure.
It would be helpful to me, because I may not be looking at what I'm thinking I'm looking at.
You're on which page, Terry?
I'm on, I'm on the page.
So, this is in the map that would be adopted, should you, should you approve?
Got it, okay, got it, okay, thank you, thank you for clarifying, yeah, all right. Well, to me, you know, I guess the council approved the policy, and the idea is to, you know, incentivize people to use the policy, so, I mean, I guess it's pretty simple to me, you know, regardless of, there's some gray area in, you know, in how the, you know, the process happened, but I would tend to support it. I just don't see a strong reasoning to look the other way and to try to make the argument that it wasn't clear enough.
Any further discussion?
Well, I think that the intention at the outset during our initial discussions was to have it included, and if it, if that was the intention, and it was not, it was just left off, then this is merely a correction of the intentions that were had from the beginning. So, you know, I think that, that a correction is, a map correction is order, is in order if we are to honor our original intentions.
Agreed. All right, any further discussion? Motion on the table to amend a perceived mapping error regarding 1212 South Jackson Street. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes five to one with Hawks in opposition, and Greg Halliday stepped out of the room. Great.
And again, I'm just opposed to the process.
Okay.
Because it's not clear to me that we always intended to put that in. In fact, I recall looking at the maps after, you know, we had our discussions, and it wasn't on the map, so I thought, huh, I got to let them know.
There's no post-mortem discussion in Robert's rules either.
That's right.
So, let's keep moving.
Moving right along, item Q.
Save it for the press in your post-meeting.
All right, the Grand County Personal Use Policy, pursuant to HB 163, County Attorney Chrissy Sloan.
On your dais.
On our dais.
So, HB 163 criminalizes use of county property by county elected officials, by employees,
by volunteers, unless we have a policy on the book that permits personal use of county property that is de minimis, so anything minimal, I redefine it, and where the proper use of the county property outweighs that de minimis use. This only implies in situations where county property has been assigned to a particular elected official, employer, volunteer, as necessary to perform their duties, and it's either a third-degree felony or a second-degree felony, paying on the value of the item. This is a big deal, it's a big change in the statute, and we have to pass the policy before July 2nd. We can't pass it retroactively to protect any employee use between July 2nd, when HB 163 becomes effective to the date of our passage. So, it is a very timely matter. What's before you is pretty general. It's based on information we received from UAC, it's based on, obviously, the statutory language, and Dana Lee and I drafted this together. Your typical situation is county cars, county computers. These are your typical situation, where they're assigned to an employee, for example, who is working on their laptop, this is a county laptop, and they take four minutes to check Facebook on their brain. So, that's a de minimis use of the laptop that does not outweigh the other 99.9% use of the computer by an employee. Or you have a road guy who has a county truck, and he goes by the pharmacy and he picks up some meds on his way back to the road department yard, right? So, that's a de minimis use of a county truck that is, you know, the proper use far exceeds this de minimis use. Those are the situations that this policy is expected to capture. There is a lot of discretion given to department heads and elected officials in supervising their employees on this policy, and otherwise, if you guys have any questions, let me know.
Mr. Chair, I would move to adopt the proposed Grand County Personal Use Policy to be added to the Grand County Employee Handbook and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Curtis Wells, seconded by Rory Paxman. Any further discussion? Thank you, Ms. Attorney, for being on top of this, and I recognize the timeliness of it, so appreciate the call-in. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Disconnect.
Take care.
Next up is the Consent Agenda action items. Item R is ratifying the chair's signature on Contract Amendment Number Four between the State of Utah Administrative Office of the Courts and Grand County for Bailiff and Security Services for July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. Item S, ratifying the chair's signature on a contract between Department of Heritage and Arts, State Library Division, and Grand County Public Library. Item T, ratifying the vice chair's signature on a thank-you letter to the San Juan Commissioners and city leaders for their efforts in travel regarding joint meeting. Item U, approving proposed cooperative grant agreement for noxious weed management with forestry, fire, and state lands for fiscal year 2020. Item V, approving application for retail beer license for Castle Creek Winery located Highway 128, mile 14, and approving application for retail beer license for Scots on the Rocks from November 1st through 3rd, 2019, located at Old Spanish Trail Arena.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the consent agenda as presented and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Curtis Wells, seconded by Mary McGann. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes six to zero with Mr. Paxman out of the room. Next up, discussion item X, Calendar Items and Public Notices, Bryony Hill, Council Office Coordinator.
For June calendars, June, August, September, January, February, March, April, May, June, August, November, December, January, July, August, September, October, 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 November, December, January, July, August, September, October,
Nothing.
Already?
It's getting out ahead.
For July, July 4th is Independence Day, trying out to be closed, July 12 through 16th is, uh, in Go and Help Us, and July 24th is Party Year Day, uh, trying out to be well.
Terry, did you say there was a water meeting in July that's of significance? Um, yeah, the VCAPS meeting, and it is, that actually, I think, is a meeting that, that just is made up of the stakeholders that are, that are in the, I think there are.
That are in the MAP, they're in the.
Yeah, in the MAPs.
Moab Area Water Partnership.
I think there's either 15 or 16 of us going to be at that, but I'll report back.
In the, what's the acronym? MAPs?
Moab Area Water, yeah, MOAPS or whatever. Yeah. Okay, yeah, anyway, I'll, I'll, I'll be going to that, so I'll.
Uh, sorry, I did have one for June, our, uh, San, I call the shots around here. The Sand Flat Stewardship Committee from the 13th was postponed until this Thursday.
Twenty. I have a quick July reminder for the 4th of July celebration that, let's see, Chamber of Commerce is doing this at Swinney Park, uh, from 10 to 2, I believe, is when the study committee will have their booth for the public to come and learn about and give input for their thoughts on what the form of government ought to be, how many people are, do we want to vote the man by districts or at large, and other, similar questions, so it's a semi-formal anonymous survey, just one more reminder about that. That's on the 4th, right? On the 4th itself, yes.
Uh, for industrial volunteers, they can use budget advisory board, so most of the residential, uh, authorities, which are not just for you, so more, March Special Service District, which is my, uh, chair, and, uh, which is, uh, all of them.
Forever.
For the opportunity, Airport Landline Operations Chief Lieutenant, who's June 28th, heavy bird on their field, what, June 21st, heavy on their line to, uh, first, June 28th, uh, she has office, which is in Foxville, July 31st, from that meeting, July 31st, vacation for patch, from July 31st, who, uh, Andrew, who's on the first, library agents, who are probably, uh, and also, uh, June, now, George Barnes, who's, uh, uh, uh.
Thanks for that. Uh, Discussion Item Y has already been covered, which brings us to Discussion Item Z, Discussion on Planning Commission Recommendation on Proposed Ordinance Changing, Limiting Use Rights Associated with New Overnight Accommodation Developments, which follows the moratorium established by Ordinance 586 on February 5th, 28, 19. Public hearing for the proposed ordinance is scheduled for July 2nd. And we have a few citizen comment cards for this item as well, so.
Okay, so in keeping with the proposed schedule or timeline that was established once the moratorium in the city and county passed, today is just a discussion item. Basically, my objective is to give you advance and notice of what you will see in the public hearing on July 2nd. So what's included in your packet reflects the recommendations from the Planning Commission that they provided following their public hearing, um, last week. So in the packet, you've got the agenda summary that follows the same form of the agenda summaries that have been provided to you in virtually every prior council meeting, cataloging the conversations that have happened in regards to overnight accommodations, use rights, and development standards in the county, uh, for the record for the public, and that's a great way to, uh, basically review how this conversation has evolved from the time when the moratorium was passed on, um, February 5th until now. So included in your packet are the primary changes that were recommended to you, there's a draft ordinance reflecting these changes. So the, the primary changes would be that, um, overnight accommodations as a principal use would be removed from all zoning districts, uh, and use table 3.1, so that's all accommodations types, so basically, sort of the use by right would be removed, and, uh, at the same time, the county would, and this is all hypothetical, of course, in case you take action, but this is what we recommended, uh, at the same time as removing those principal uses from the use table, the county would establish, uh, new, use-specific overnight accommodations overlays. So whether you know this or not, county currently has an overnight accommodations overlay. It was established in 2008 specifically to, um, establish, uh, whole subdivisions or, or, uh, development sites where, uh, basically residential units use for overnight accommodations, so your Airbnb, VRVOs and such, uh, where those could be permitted. So at that time, the overlay was immediately attached to subdivisions that were essentially built for that kind of use and were known to be, you know, predominantly characterized by that use. And so what this proposed ordinance would do is repeal that overlay and replace it with three new use-specific overlays, one for campgrounds, one for hotels and motels, and one for residential units used for overnight accommodations. And it would, uh, yet again, attach the overlay to all, uh, you know, um, existing invested projects that fit those use-specific categories. So it doesn't include, for instance, bed and breakfast in residential neighborhoods because the council took action last year to remove that use right from residential areas, so the planning commission did not take action on protecting those already legal non-conform uses through an overlay. The purpose of these overlays is to essentially create a certainty for existing invested projects and, uh, you know, protect their rights to continue operating their various overnight accommodations types going forward. Notably, the planning commission, um, recommended that, uh, no expansion of, um, existing or vested projects, uh, based on what they will approve for, would be permitted, uh, at least at this time. Landmark Design did provide some draft development standards that would, uh, address some of the, like, performance and design and mixed use requirements that had emerged as the, uh, you know, important standards within the conversation of new overnight accommodations overlays, but, uh, the planning commission did not get those applied to fully vet them and work through them and make sure that they fit with, uh, you know, what they, the public wants to accomplish. And so as of now, um, the, uh, the overlay districts that are being proposed to you basically just set forth the process of, um, application and, you know, some of the higher level, like, purpose statements. Uh, I will note that, um, while the planning commission is certainly, in my opinion, vast majority of public sentiment, is not advocating for new approvals, uh, if this does create a framework by which the county could actually, you know, apply overlays to properties that are not currently overnight accommodations or vested projects, right? So I still think, you know, that there's a lot of work to be done, as I said in the last meeting, I think that's, uh, on, you know, July 16th or August 2nd, I think there's a lot of momentum and a lot of new understanding about what's going on in the overnight accommodations market and what the various issues are and what the community, uh, you know, I don't want to suggest that the community is singular in its perspective, but, uh, what in my opinion represents the majority, you know, opinion of the community, uh, you know, what they want to see in terms of future development in this valley. So, uh, you'll see, I'll point out that in the packet, um, you've got the, the draft OAO, the language that, uh, that staff put into the same code structure as what currently exists, and then later in the packet, you see the code language that was written and presented by Landmark, which doesn't really match the way that our land use code appears. So that's provided to you to ensure that there's, you know, consistent record of what showed up in the planning commission meeting and what, you know, is going to come to you in the public hearing, but, you know, ultimately, what I'm recommending is, is sort of a version that, uh, you know, reflects the same policy and changes, but is in a more, I imagine, uh, you know, these are, you know.
So with, uh, thanks for that, it's, um, I had a question about the map, if I'm not jumping the gun.
What, which page?
Well, I, uh, let's see.
Just like the, the one in Spanish Valley?
Actually, the, I mean, the largest one that I see here kind of goes up to 313 and maybe a dozen or 20 miles up the river road, and I was wondering if the planning commission had discussed areas outside there, like, uh, closer to the town of Green River and Elgin, or right along, um, I-70, or in Thompson or Cisco.
So they did briefly, that, um, you know, we continue to remind them of the areas outside of Spanish Valley in this conversation, and the general consensus from the planning commission in these was, uh, we don't, you know, have a strong desire to, uh, approve new overnight accommodations in those areas, and certainly not until we develop better, more effective, uh, standards that, that will result in the types of development outcome we want to see, uh, but more importantly, uh, the planning commission felt that, um, uh, you know, residents and community leaders and businesses in those particular locales, at least in the farther, like, you know, more peripheral communities, um, should approach the county with, you know, more thorough desire, uh, before the planning commission sort of, you know, made policies for them. Now, it's, you know, that is the situation right now, the county is the land use authority of those non-corporate communities, but, uh, for all intents and purposes, there's very little communication between our office and the planning commission, uh, you know, the residents of places like Elgin and Thompson, we reach out, there's certainly been an effort to, uh, communicate to, to residents, at least in Thompson area, that our office can be a resource, that we would like to help, and that we certainly see value in doing some land use planning right now, but that offer is not the, uh, taken, taken.
And, uh.
So that was the position of the.
And the Cisco group, was there?
So, uh, there's at least one landowner, or, uh, in Cisco that, um, that has sort of, you know, a proper interest and a desire to have some accommodations there. That owner has submitted comments throughout the, um, throughout the process, but, uh, the planning commission, you know, apparently was not motivated by those, you know. Just to be clear, you know, I think you all understand this, but since we're on the record now, uh, and hopefully this, you know, clears up maybe some potential confusion in the community, our office is, you know, charged with facilitating this process and providing research and best practices and, you know, our sort of best, you know, stated knowledge on these issues, but we, you know, sort of pushing, uh, you know, certain policy clauses, so, we try to stay very neutral.
Yes, appreciate that.
So I, I've got a question, Zachariah, or actually two questions. One is, are there any, um, private residences in the county that have a business license to do overnight rental that we know of?
There it is.
Are there any private, are there any private residents that, that, aside from condominium projects and so on, that, that have business license to do overnight rental?
Yeah, I mean, every overnight rental in Drake County has to have a business license to operate, so there are some that are currently in existence that are not included in the proposed overlay, that they were not included because they didn't, they're, you know, sort of individual units surrounded by, you know, non-commercial residential uses, so they would remain legal non-conforming uses. Bed and breakfasts, as I mentioned, you know, they are business licenses, but, uh, they were, uh, you know, basically converted to legal non-conforming uses when the council removed that use right from residential zones. So those would be examples, I think, in the category that you're asking about.
Yeah, so were the, aside from the B and Bs, were the other designated as legal non-conforming uses?
They would be, you know, post-action. If they, if they don't exist in like a known, sort of like a nighty rental subdivision, like Red Cliffs Condos or, or West of El Sol, or Bear Del Sol, or South Gate, you know, some of these, these are the, like, full developments, those are the ones that are included in the.
So what's the reasoning not to include those that are, that are already doing it? I mean, they're essentially vested, aren't they?
Well, uh, you know, I think the reasoning, certainly with the B and Bs, was that, uh, you know, you had already, you mean this body that are deemed that non-conforming uses.
So the B and Bs, yeah, but I'm speaking.
Yeah, and for the other, like, individual instances of overnight accommodations, uh, you know, the logic was just that, um, that, you know, that this sort of, uh, policy logic behind establishing the overlays is that you are, you know, eating certain areas that the county is deemed appropriate for overnight accommodations developments, and while there may be some there in existence that aren't in those areas, uh, you know, largely you're trying to protect the, you know, subdivisions and developments that are virtually all overnight rentals. So, you know, I, I think certainly there's some room for debate there, uh, but that was the logic.
Okay, then, then, on the B and Bs, my understanding, while visiting the planning commission meeting, was that they, they simply just did not feel they wanted to revisit the, the conversation? Am I, was I accurate?
Yeah, I mean, I think that was part of it, and, you know, I wouldn't say that was the only reason or the dominant reason, and like, there were, you know, there was debate on it, uh, and I, I'm trying to characterize where each planning commissioner is at, but in addition to that logic, I think, you know, another piece of logic is that, uh, you know, the reason why B and Bs were converting to legal non-conforming uses a year ago is because they have special, they may lead to special impact, they have the potential to lead to special impacts that, uh, you know, prove problematic for, you know, permanent residents and neighborhoods and, um, you know, the, the whole notion of making them legal non-conforming uses is that, you know, property for businesses in operation already can continue their use, but, uh, you know, potentially over time, some of those uses would go away as people, you know, decided to just, just move their homes as primary residences instead of bed and breakfasts, uh, but, you know, until somebody abandoned that use, they can continue, um, so, uh, you know, legal non-conforming uses transfer with ownership, uh, they run with the land, so as long as, you know, the new owner gets a new business license and continues operating, B and B, they can continue operating, it's just that if, if they either abandon the property, uh, abandoned the use, sorry, which means, um, basically. means basically ceasing back from the, the property that the B and B part of it for six months or longer, then they would lose that legal non-conforming status.
Thank you.
So I have a question. So, we sent a, or put together a memo, Jayne Lynn, myself, and Terry, that you guys delivered to the planning commission, correct? And so the response from the planning commission was, we disagree? Is that what I'm hearing?
Great.
So, what's that?
I was just, you know, when, when I read the memo, I was, kind of saw it as a separate issue, you know, that especially since the first line kind of references the action from a year and a half ago.
And that memo's not in the packet? I mean, I think they're all aware of the county attorney's, you know, recommendation regarding disclosures. Do you want to just re-get into the record here?
Well, I'll allow the author to do that. I'm happy, go ahead, you wrote it.
Well, okay, I'll just do my disclosure first. I own nightly rentals. Oh, that's your disclosure. I am the part-owner of a licensed B and B operating as a legal non-conforming use on our property in Grand County. The passing or failing of the proposed ordinance has no bearing on financial gains or losses of our small business.
Well, so, my disclosure is, I own nightly rentals, but I'm not positioned for direct financial gain subsequent to the proposed ordinance passing or failing. And I, so I think, here's what I was, the reason why I concurred with the memo, is if we're going in and we're identifying, you know, all the lodging uses that are currently permitted, RVs, parks, hotels, nightly rentals, if the only logic to keep, to not implement a bed and breakfast base zone, is that we've already talked about that issue and removed that from the land use code, if the county council is saying, you know, for this to be, to clean this up, and provide certainty for those existing bed and breakfasts moving forward, also the case, and this is what I didn't like, when we removed bed and breakfast from, as a permitted use, a lot of it was centered around our failure to appropriately enforce our code, not that bed and breakfasts are ruining, you know, terrible housing opportunities or whatever. And so, there are scenarios that I believe that can come up in the future, where a bed and breakfast makes sense in a certain area, where it's not going to be extremely disruptive to, you know, the residents, and for us to have the ability to evaluate that, you know, through the, through a base zone, makes every bit of sense as all of these other lodging uses. And so, I guess, you know, we had a conversation with the plant, with the travel council at 2:00 today, where we went through several times and explained, you know, covered there an advisory board, they exist to advise us on matters. And so, if we're going to put together a, frankly, a policy position like we did with three council members, one absent quorum, we need to have good reasoning for that to be kicked back to us that says, no thanks, from our advisory board that's drafting the policy, because if we get crossways on that, and the county council does intend to have a bed and breakfast zone included in the update to our land use code, then you run the risk of this failing, because we didn't, our advisors didn't listen to us. And so I want council members to understand what we're saying. You understand, we're saying, we're going to remove all of the lodging uses from, as permitted uses from the land use code, and to provide certainty for the existing business owners or vested projects, and to allow for the flexibility for future development, we're going to implement these base zones for each use, but we're just leaving out bed and breakfast for really no reason, other than we've already had contentious discussions for it, and the planning commission doesn't feel like addressing that. And that doesn't make for a clean policy.
I think, to, the stuff that we're dealing with here, in this ordinance, is specific to commercial zoning. And the moratorium that we passed specifically called out commercial zones. And so to bring the conversation back to residential zones, when we haven't made any kind of changes to the code enforcement that you mentioned, it seems like that wasn't what initiated this conversation, and with the deadline that we're working under, I still see it as kind of two separate things. Because I don't hear a large outcry from the public about protecting businesses and commercial ventures in residential areas, the way that we do with this other stuff that led to the.
Well, I, I do hear from folks, and the, you know, my argument to that is, is what drove this was lodging, not necessarily, we didn't tell the public we're really worried about commercial zones. We said, we're worried about growth and lodging, and it just so happens that hotels are limited to commercial zones. And in the city, we have residential zones, you know, that allow for nightly rentals. And so I don't think the fact that bed and breakfast, you know, are allowed for, or used to be allowed for in residential zones is completely off-topic. If we're going to implement, you know, base zones to manage growth moving forward, I just don't see the argument to just look the other way when it comes to bed and breakfast.
Can I just offer a couple items here?
Please.
So, I want to describe the difference between the legal non-conforming status and like an overlay status. And then I want to point out that, you know, I take one, one sort of insight that comes out of the conversation we're having, is that, and some councilman Wells's comments, is that there are, in a current proposed map, there are some, like, individual properties, even in like the highway commercial zones, that currently have overnight accommodations on them, that, you know, are permitted uses, that they want to include it in the proposed overlay, because they're part of one of these, you know, larger subdivisions. So that's an area where you can certainly make a change for including them, because there are commercial zones that have the established use. So, so that's one part. The second part is, so the difference between a legal non-conforming use is that the burden of evidence is on the property owner, that the use was legally established and only became a non-conforming use due to a change in the code, and that the use has been in existence continually since the time that it became a non-conforming use. So, it certainly has legal protection to continue operating, it runs with the land and your ownership, the use can still continue. If you establish an overlay and you attach it to a parcel, you are essentially guaranteeing that even if somebody abandons that use, in the technical, you know, meaning of that term, it ceases to operate for six months or longer, if an overlay is attached, then that doesn't matter, they can always just come back in and re-initiate the use, right? So I just want to make sure that that nuance is clear to you all. And I think that was, you know, whether you're for or against, you know, bed and breakfast, that I think that logic of, you know, that a use could potentially go away just by the abandonment of it, was one of the pieces of logic for the last decision. And if you remember, you know, our office was certainly of the opinion that we thought there were instances where bed and breakfasts could be, you know, appropriate in neighborhood, and we just could never figure out, it wasn't even really, I mean, enforcement was part of it, but it was, it was more an issue of we just couldn't get the standards that would effectively mitigate or prevent those special circumstances. So, I'm happy to revisit that. I don't see it as being, you know, central to this larger conversation personally, but I understand the great concern and the desire, and so, you know, that's.
There's no window, just to close that, having, and I mean, which, where this gets difficult, is if we're not applying overnight accommodations overlays to, like, those individual nightly rental residents, like on a parcel-by-parcel basis, which we are doing for hotels and RV parks, I realize, you know, whatever the reason there, you would have to do the same thing for bed and breakfasts. You would have to apply that, that, yeah, parcel-by-parcel. But the advantage with, you know, I don't agree with not including, you know, only including those nightly rental subdivisions, but regardless, that window is open for people to come in and apply and say, hey, as those legal non-conforming uses, once this passes, I've been operating this nightly rental in this area, I have a business license, as opposed to being a legal non-conforming use, I would like to apply this overlay zone to my parcel, and have that certainty, you know, moving forward. I would like bed and breakfast owners to have that ability, because I do believe there are scenarios. Council, if someone comes to a young family and they say, I live in this area, it's outside the, well, the overnight accommodations overlay is gone, never mind, but I live in this area, this bed and breakfast would generate some extra income for my family, we evaluate it, we don't see any problems with it, you want the ability to approve that. And to do that, assuming it's a business that's not currently a legal non-conforming use, you have to have this tool to do that.
And you actually have that structure in place already, it's just that the planning commission has not had time to work through the standards, right, that would give you sort of a support for characterizing whether it was appropriate or inappropriate.
With the current overlay, but we're going to repeal that.
No, no, with the proposed overlays. They would, I mean, in my opinion, they would fall under that residential.
Oh.
Use for overnight accommodations now. So, so, you know, unless the council were to say, you know, these overlay boundaries are fixed and no new parcels could be, you know, given the overlay, you know, then frankly, anybody can come in and still ask for these overlays. You know, my opinion is that, you know, you would, you would basically need to go against, you know, that's majority of feedback that we receive through this process, and approve a request like that, but.
Yeah, but these people are already vested, that's the thing that bothers me.
Yeah, yeah, right.
And that goes for the residents as well as the B and Bs, and, you know, I mean, you know, if they're compelled to come back and get permission for something they already have, you know, I mean, I, it seems to me more, more wise to just take care of it all at once.
Yeah, I'm referring to new development.
Yeah, well, no, I understand, I understand that, that I, okay, that I've circled back to the existing, and that's what, that's what my concern is, because I think that it's a lot cleaner to do it all at once, rather than trying to have to go back and remake the wheel, so.
Yeah, I agree.
And it doesn't take, I mean, it, well, I don't know, that's, that's not a good statement, I don't know how long it would take, but it would seem to me that you could pull the business license and saw everything that was expand, and know pretty quickly what.
Oh, we know where all of it is.
Yeah, so, it seems to me, it's just like put the color on the map.
Sure.
I agree. Obviously, I was the author of this memo. I mean, it, it just, if a, if a non-conforming use and an overlay are so equivalent, why is the non-conforming use not good enough for the vested projects on the highway? But it's good enough for the B and Bs that are existing in residential zones as legal non-conforming uses. It just doesn't make sense to me. It seems like we would want to give those residences the assurity that we're trying to give the bigger developments that are already existed, existing as a vested use. And I'm looking at this map from 521 council meeting packet, that shows all of the, shows vested developments, B and Bs and short-term rentals. Yes, it does say there are 822 units of those, but the colors on the map, those are marked in blue, and it's really, it doesn't look like that big of a deal to me, because a lot of those 822 units are in bigger developments that, you know, have 40, 50 apiece, and so I don't think it would be that big of a deal. They are residential units used as overnight rentals, partially, and they are vested, just like the highway projects, so.
I think we need, we need to give some feedback to Zachariah and the planning commission based off this review here.
No, you don't. Well, I mean, not to the planning commission, because, you know, as you've noted, they're an advisory body, they've ordered a recommendation, but the changes that you're discussing now can just be discussed in the public process.
Okay, well, I guess we need to.
It doesn't need to go back to the planning commission.
At least, okay, at least for the council's sake, we need to probably get some head knots on this stuff, because the clock's ticking, and these are pretty big issues. So, like, for the, the issue of, you know, an over, the overlay that's, that's created for nightly rentals, and only including subdivisions, and not existing, you know, businesses and vested developments, I think we need to get some consensus on that. We do need to get some consensus on that, that's a big one. And also on bed and breakfasts, to make sure everyone's understanding that. So that there are people that are currently operating.
Non-conforming?
No, there are people that are currently operating a conforming nightly rental business as a permitted use, that are going to have that use removed from, you know, from their zoning, because they're not included in this overlay, because they don't have, their business isn't in a greater subdivision of nightly rentals. They're being, they're being removed due to that fact.
Do you know how many of those fall in that scenario?
Off the top of my head, and, you know, again, I'm not advising you on what to do, but I think you could also separate out the uses that Councilman Wells has identified in currently commercially zoned areas from, you know, residentially zoned areas, and have some discussion about that. You know, I definitely see, you know, a strong policy argument for including all existing vested projects and currently commercially zoned areas. That, I don't think, there needs to be a whole lot of debate about that. We can have those.
Was there, was there any argument against doing that?
No, no, I don't think so.
Well, it seems like it's easy.
And again, you know, you have to have this conversation in the public hearing as well, you know, we're starting to get into some of the.
Action, yeah.
Debate about the actual policy. This was primarily thinking there's advanced coverage of it. And it's fine, I just wanted, you know, I think you all should know that you need to have some of this discussion as well.
In the public hearing.
So, with that said, you know, I do see a fundamental difference between some of these individual properties and commercially zoned areas, like on the highway, on individual instances of a, you know, overnight rental versus, you know, overnight accommodations that were deemed, you know, to be potentially inappropriate and non-conforming uses, you know, in residential areas. Yeah, multiple ones in the past, right? Because that happened first in 2008, and they get in 2017, you know, with bed and breakfast change, so, that may be another way to think about, about these instances.
The other thing is, if, if we eventually created the bandwidth for bed and breakfast in the nightly rental base zone, you know, merging those two, I guess, is concerning to me, because that, to me, was part of the problem in the first place, is people with a bed and breakfast business license were marking those as nightly rentals and running them as nightly rentals. So when we start to cross those paths, it, I would just. So when we start to cross those paths, it, I would just rather keep them separate and have a bed and breakfast overlay, you know, for us to address those.
That makes sense.
But at least we've required business license to track these things. This, this, the city didn't even require business licenses for nightly rentals this whole time.
We now require land use permits as well, the one-time permit.
Write a story about that. So.
The first time a unit becomes an overnight accommodation, we require land use permit and then business licenses ongoing annually.
Should we hear from the citizen?
Switching gears, citizen comment?
A lot of this could talk about.
Uh, as Zachariah highlighted, there will be a public hearing, um, where a lot of this will, where the majority of this will actually be, um, discussed and debated and such. But, um, I do have some cards here and we would ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. And first up is Michael Scarda. Is that how you say your name?
Yeah, thank you, Michael Scarda. Um, thank you for taking the time. Uh, I live, uh, by Dead Horse Point Turnoff. I own a home there. It's a vacation rental also. Um, so there's Moab under Canvas and then there's Tanner Property, then there's us, Namaste Rock, and then the Mont Singers property, and then Archview. So we're, we're five parcels there in a row. And the overnight stays, those are up and functioning and frankly, they're beautiful. They're fantastic neighbors. Uh, and then the other two parcels, the homes are abandoned, their windows are smashed in, there's, um, a property that's, has in the past had a quarter that hasn't been cleaned up, so there, there are many RVs there that are not functional. And, and so contrast this with, uh, Moab City and the surrounding county areas, um, we have very, very different problems. And, and so we have this moratorium, uh, there was a vote that stopped overnight stays. And you look down the list, all those people, their names, they're all from Moab City and this, and the valley here. And the, the restriction has been imposed countywide. So you have a little teeny micro area and, and now we're applying these general rules to the whole county. And they don't fit the whole county. They, they fit Moab. And so, yeah, I, I propose, I, I hope that, that we go ahead and create something more, be it where the current zoning gets to stay or an overlay for the rest of the county or, uh, you know, a very clear method on how these can be obtained because we don't have it. I, I don't want to live in between abandoned homes with broken windows because they can't, you know, get the overnight housing. Um, so, um, keep in mind, uh, before, you know, we, we, we have a bipolar mentality, shut down everything. We, we've gone from crazy building to shut down everything and now after.
Thirty seconds.
You know, six months, we're still in the same position. We, we don't know what to do. We, we don't have, we don't have a clear path forward. Let's go ahead and, and keep everything shut down until we figure it out. For how long? And it, so, so at least in the areas that don't have these issues, keep things, keep things running. We, we don't need to shut down the whole county. There, there's more to the county than, than Moab. There, that's all I have to do.
Thanks. Joe Kingsley?
I'm Joe Kingsley and I have no vested interest in this ordinance. I'm here to tell you, I've been here before. In 1974, no, 1994, excuse me, this body was faced with the same kind of outcry. We have too many houses. We need to stop building houses. And you know what the county council did? They issued a whole series of ordinances to risk, uh, make it harder to build homes. Guess what? Twenty-five years later, we're suffering still from that. So I want to tell you that I'm very concerned about this ordinance. Economics 101, it is very hard to recover from a mistake. It is very easy to shut off an economic stream. It is very hard to recover from that. The other point that I would like to make is be careful because you're taking a vested right out of commercial zone. And I haven't seen what the landmark modifications are, but I'm telling you, if I had vested money inland in a commercial zone which currently has, uh, overnight lodging and you take it away from me, that's called a takings. This whole ordinance concept, in my opinion, is a slippery slope. I know there's a problem, I'm not denying that, but I'm saying we need creativity and thinking out of the box. And a takings is not creativity. Be careful. This is a slippery slope. Thank you.
Thanks for that. James Keel?
I'm Jim Keel and, uh, I own about seven-eighths of an acre in Spanish Valley on Spanish Valley Drive. My property is split zone, or it was, I'm not quite sure where I'm at now. Uh, the front of it's commercial, the back of the property is residential. I have a home there that's conforming to residential. I use my, uh, commercial property to, for, uh, equipment storage. That property has been used for that purpose since in the late 50s, mid 50s almost. And, uh, so I, for, I've owned it for thirty, thirty, forty years. And, uh, I've always paid my taxes on time. They seem a little high for, uh, the use I've used before, but I always had in the back of my mind that, uh, someday I would have equipment, I'd get tired of digging ditches and, and I'd do something else. And so these, my property rights going away, it bothered me a little. I, uh, I feel like that, uh, I probably made a mistake by investing in Grand County. That's what happens. Uh, I could have bought Chupacool State elsewhere and probably still live close by. I'm, uh, my property is situated a couple blocks from the proposed college. I, I, it seems like it's more than a proposed college because they're building the road. The first thing I noticed, I'm, I'm, I believe I can apply for a high-density housing within the overlay. But the first thing I noticed was that on the deed restriction, uh, it doesn't allow for students.
Yeah, thirty seconds.
Pardon?
Thirty seconds.
I always thought I would, uh, do some over, maybe some overnight rentals, pay for something to become student housing. I also have a comment on, so I think that's a little bit of short-sightedness, definitely not far-sightedness for long-term planning, to not allow students in your overlay zone, only working people.
That's our, uh, three minutes, Jim.
Okay.
Thanks.
I have a comment on B and B. Can you sum it, some other point?
Please join us for our public hearing.
Excuse me, Jim?
Yes.
Is Greg taking time?
I, I guess.
Cause he's more welcome to do it. I don't really like to tell, tell people they can't talk, so I would rather just have him do it.
I think I would.
I love to hear people talk, so I, I'm good with it.
Yeah, I got it.
You can have all my time.
Paul Jones?
I have a comment on B and Bs, I believe that, uh, if my property qualifies for this overlay, I can't think of any reason why I wouldn't qualify for B and Bs.
Thanks.
There is.
Thanks.
Uh, thanks for giving me a few moments. I would just, uh, ask all of you to, to not adopt this ordinance. Uh, there's been the planning commission public hearing, there was a lot of, uh, local oppositions are taking the property rights away and I would, uh, I would suggest you keep that. I want to, and I, I made a very similar comment in the planning commission public hearing, but I'm going to reiterate it here. Um, a significant concern that, uh, my interests, I should say, sit with the hotel motel sort of, those ordinance that exists. And, uh, the concern that, that we view, uh, if the ordinance does pass, is that currently that ordinance would contemplate that, uh, you know, a property owner in our situation would, would apply for a rezone to be able to be situated in to, uh, an overlay district for a hotel or hotel. And, uh, this situation might also apply to the other overlay districts, but currently an application to a rezone is really arbitrary in terms of how that would be approved. So I would encourage this body to, uh, put some serious thought into how a rezone application might apply. Uh, as it sits for the moment, the, the math looks like the haves and have-nots and why those were selected is because they're, they were there. Conduct, conduct though, uh, is, is, is what should matter, right? Uh, if, uh, you know, our property is, is pretty close to other hotels and motels, they would be engaging in the same conduct that we, we would engage in a similar location, uh, but they're the haves and we would be the have-nots. And, uh, what is the rationale behind that and what drives that decision? We want to know because we can kind of guarantee that we'll come before this body again for a rezone application and if we're arbitrarily denied, that's, that's not right either. There's got to be some objective, not subjective, but objective criteria that needs to be evaluated. I, I'd submit that's probably true for the other overlay districts as well, but, um, as presently drafted, the ordinance really, you know, doesn't speak to it, it leans it to the existing criteria in the, in the land use code, which I would suggest since this has never been done before, doesn't really address the, the needs of these overlay districts. And that's something that this body ought to be concerned about. Planning commission didn't seem to care, but, uh, which I followed on, but we got a lot of care.
Thank you. That was it for the, uh, public com.
I may have put, what do you say, I may have put light down on the wall.
Oh, I do have some from you here, so, yes.
Can I speak to this?
Uh, please, if this, yes.
I'm Dwayne Stewart. I currently reside out in Ridge Village, been there for about 10 years. Um, and I do represent HOAs, I take care of quite a few of the HOAs in town and in the county here. Um, Western Slope is where I developed for many years. Western Slope, 20 years ago going through what you're going through today. I built many homes for people that just like in this community here, the town, not the county, but the town, would come in and try and stop us and did stop us from developing. I built their homes. They were the people that didn't grow up in our communities, they were not the owners of the land that allowed us to develop in the first place, but they wanted to stop all development after that. And we're successful in many of the Western Slope areas. Uh, we, we developed in Vale, we developed in Aspen, we develop in, in many different areas on the Western Slope. And I, what it did, it stopped development, did a great job at that, but it also increased prices on housing and everything else because it wasn't there. I guarantee you that stopping motels, stopping overnight rentals, isn't going to help your housing market. What you, what you're in the process of adopting with the high density is very good. I like that and I'd like to speak at that at some point in time. I think that's going to help a lot, but there are problems in that that you need to be aware of also. Taking people's land rights away, I feel is very dangerous and it's not a good thing to do at all. I'm not sure it's going to solve your problem. The problem may move to San Juan County, it may move somewhere else. Um, and for the whole county, as we were talking about, uh, the gentleman behind me here, that there's different problems. We had different communities there with the smaller, different towns and to do a blanket, uh, restriction, I just think is a horrible thing to go into. It's going to take a lot of, it's not an easy problem, you got a big problem here, but banning the ability to build with land or take away the right of people's land is, that's just the, I've seen it work and it costs a lot of money in Waldo. And then there's also what happens with the overnight or the high density, uh, it's a great idea, but you have to consider with the people that are going into your units are HOA dues. When your economy goes down and slips, can we pay them? Uh, what happens when people get fired? Was that my time? I do have another card I could talk back.
Okay, thanks. Uh, we do have many, or a few more agenda items here, so I would like to, to move on. And, uh, Zachariah, did you have other stuff on, uh, item Z?
No, not at all.
Any further discussion from the council? Great. Moving on, we do have two public hearings tonight. Are we past five o'clock? Are we?
Yeah, yeah, we're past five.
All right. Uh, um, first up is item AA, public hearing to hear public comment on proposed ordinance to apply the high-density housing overlay to Sandstone cottages located at 3058 and 3060 Spanish Valley Drive. Zachariah?
Okay, so, um, I am pleased to present to you the very first, uh, high-density housing overlay application. This application is submitted by Glenn Lent. Uh, I don't know if he is the property owner yet, but, uh, has been authorized by the property owner. By the time this, this application was initially submitted, it's actually, uh, submitted and moving forward. So, um, here's where we're at. So you've got a high-density housing overlay application in front of you, it's for the HDHO 15 district. The planning commission board did a favorable recommendation for application of the overlay. The Planning Commission Board did a favorable recommendation for application of the overlay. They also provided a conditional approval of the preliminary plat, which means that the plat conforms with the standards of the HDHO 15 district. They felt comfortable saying, should the, I'm sorry, the 10 district, HDHO 10, should the county council take legislative action and apply the overlay to this specific parcel, the preliminary plat is good to go as is. So while that's not the subject of today's public hearing, it's presented to you as part of the record and, you know, makes certain pertinent for conversation. So included in the packet is the applicant's narrative stating why the overlay is appropriate on this parcel and why their preliminary plat meets the legislative intent of the policy and the development agreement that has been.
Yeah.
Mary's going to straighten them out.
So included in the packet are those application materials as well as the development agreement that the county attorney has approved for form and content. So that document would be recorded alongside the final plat, basically permitting the developer to maintain the de-restricted, de-restriction requirements of the high-density housing overlay. You've also got in the packet a version of the plat that is demarcated, the lots that would be de-restricted, those will have to be marked on the plat that is ultimately recorded, the final plat. So staff's recommendation is to remove the overlay.
I guess they don't follow directions.
Means you would apply the HDHO 10 district to these parcels requested. And, yeah, I am confident the developer is committed to the, you know, the intent of the requirements of the policy. The applicant that's here with us tonight certainly gave him a chance to address you if his choice chooses. He participated in many of the conversations as the HDHO policy was getting developed, not necessarily to influence the outcome in my opinion, but to stay informed when you can, you know, value the opportunity that seemed to be unfolding. So be very aware of, you know, how this policy has come to be and, so I think, you know, this is an appropriate place for its development. I'll note that developer has voluntarily agreed to put a privacy fence around the subdivision. They've given the opportunity to develop accordingly through the conditionally approved preliminary plat. So will be required to keep you complying with all of the engineering requirements and those requirements of all the other reviewing agencies. And it will be required to bond for or construct their portion of that multi-use pathway along the Spanish Valley Drive. So that's what I've got for you as far as staff's hesitation. There is one comment in the packet from the public. That was the only written comment we received, the only oral comment was at the Planning Commission meeting, and it was regarding this privacy fence which the developer agreed to provide. So that's it, our public comment today.
So with that, we'd open this public hearing and if there's any comments from citizens or anyone else, just come up to the microphone and introduce yourself and... Any questions from the council?
Do you want to speak, George?
This, yeah, if you come to the microphone so it gets recorded and, yeah, regarding the specific sandstone cottages application. Thank you.
And again, the developer is here with us today, so definitely want to address the council.
I'd love to answer questions. I'm not sure there's much I can add to your presentation or to the packet.
Any questions from the council?
So this is on Spanish Valley Road, not Spanish Valley Drive?
Spanish Valley Drive.
Okay, I read Road. I swear it said Road.
Not Spanish Trail. I'm not aware of this.
Oh, okay. I wasn't either, so I was confused by it. I thought it was on Spanish Valley, but it does say Spanish Valley Road on the, so I thought, I knew right, I thought I knew right where it was. I thought, I know right where this is, but that's Spanish Valley Road. I don't know if that's important to change, but it is on the map.
Have a question. This open area inside the lots, what's that, the common area?
Yeah, that'll be commonly owned area. It will be a combination of the storm monitoring infrastructure.
Okay.
And open space for the residences and the all.
Okay. And who's going to maintain that?
The HOA.
HOA? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we'll have to have an HOA and they'll maintain that. But it's really set up to, you know, it's community space. It's where we hope people come together, where we hope that, you know, the neighbors know each other, the kids play and stuff.
Yeah, I did, you know, I just, I didn't want to see it end up as a dumping area. Nobody's maintaining it and it's convenient to dump your trash cookies there and matches and everything.
And I just wanted to clarify again, you're not, you know, making a decision on the preliminary plat, right, to the overlay.
Okay, I was just.
Yeah.
All right. So do you have any idea of the size of the houses that will go on the lots? So the homes that we've designed right now are anywhere from, so they're all two-story and they're anywhere from 1,000 feet to 1,500 square feet. So, you know, roughly 500 square foot with an unfinished basement as well. So...
So the footprint, the footprints roughly?
Footprints are roughly 20, 20 by 30? And then most of them have a detached garage as well. So the idea is, you know, to create affordability is most of it. We've looked at other product types. We wanted people to feel like they had their own home. We've done some of the setbacks that we plan on doing. We have some use, even though the lots are small and the homes are small, we're trying to maximize the space. We have some use agreements where on one side of your house, you can use the property all the way to the other guy's property and it gives you a little more space rather than having, you know, you have five feet and we have five feet and none of it's usable. So there are little things, you know, the whole intent is, again, affordability for the locals, but in the confines of, you know, this is my house. I live in a single-family house and we felt that's what the community needed.
Chris, did you have a?
So I just wanted to clarify, at this point with the current HDHO or the ordinance as this project's vested, is there a development agreement of any kind?
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Okay.
So...
I mean, well, you could make a motion. We'll see what happens.
Well, there's one stated here.
Well, usually we postpone action until the fall.
Is there a stated motion?
I know.
We could, we could suspend the rules and vote on it tonight.
I'm a big rule follower. This is the first time that the HDHO would be applied and I, as excited about it as I am, I would like to leave the public comment period open until, um...
So excited.
June, till Wednesday, June 26th, and comments could be submitted to council@grandcountyutah.net or at the administrator's office in this building next door. But if you want to suspend the rules, we could have a vote on it.
No, 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 no.
Okay, okay. Any further comment on the hearing tonight?
How many, how many units vested again?
Forty.
And we agreed to, when was the cap? Let's try to remember.
Well, it actually was in at less...
I needed to bring that issue up, actually, in the amendments. But let's finish this and I can make that comment.
I was just going to say that the density was a little lower than the 10, so it wasn't maximized.
But...
Jalen.
Burning hands, Eric. I guess I just worry about the traffic on Spanish Valley. I mean, 40 homes, did you at one point say some study says there's about two and a half trips into town per household? Don't you have some data on that?
Well, the ITD Trip Generation Manual, which is just standardized across all jurisdictions across the country, says anything's personal.
Yeah. I mean, I just think of Spanish Trail Road up on, up by what, 91 and sometimes there's long lines. Maybe they'll put a light there.
Yeah, they need a light.
The reality is that prior to final plat approval, you know, there will have to be a full analysis of the generation. I don't know exactly what kind of roadway improvements might be needed, but if there are, it would be, you know, there are members who are represented. And, you know, Glenn is aware of that, making, well aware of the ongoing review.
Typically you try to, as a development, you try to maintain the level of service that is there. I suspect that Spanish Valley Drive has a pretty high level of service and they're typically graded, you know, A, B, C, D, and F essentially. We've done a little bit of research, at least on a traffic standpoint. We may have to do like a small right-hand turning lane coming off of Spanish Valley Drive. We haven't done a full-blown analysis, but even if it's, the engineer's pushing us to do that, I'm not sure the numbers, and I don't want to get in the weeds here, but...
Do we know about connecting to that East Cactus Road? Is that, okay. Joe?
Transportation committee, and this is high on our agenda as well, to mitigate control and to maintain, I mean, do we need one? If it is all right.
Thanks for that. Any further comment?
It's exciting.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
It is exciting. Next up is public hearing B and B.
Before we close, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Oh, sorry.
I actually just want to mention, I'm picking myself up, but I'm not bringing this up when we're going through the HDHO amendments, but currently the cap is 300 units before that policy sunsets and we have applications in for 413 units. So...
Jeez, 113. I'm not going to get that.
You said it wouldn't work, Terry. No, I said we need to assess the incremental impact.
All right. Assessment is eminent. Let's set aside some assessment study funding. All right, sorry.
So, you know, I guess what I'm saying is that we are going to reach a point where, you know, you will, you know, potentially, yeah, you know, approve HDHO overlays for, you know, a number of units that's under 300, but then the next application will push it over 300. And I guess, you know, you can, you can address this in a couple of ways. You can amend that cap. You can tell me not to accept applications for urban units that would go above it, but we're already at that point. So, you know, we, our office anticipated this, that's why we first started out with 1,000 and then went down to 500 and 300 is what was adopted. Certainly part of the logic was to, you know, sort of out the growth, you need out the growth, but, you know, it's important if you're aware of that.
I would be inclined to, you know, raise the cap and would be my 10 cents and if we, you know, we have that discussion again at, you know, 700 units or 1,000 units, but I don't know. That's my thoughts.
How many units did you say we needed in the screen?
Well, we're still, we need to update our numbers. The last time we did a full-blown analysis was in 2017 and there were 1,000 households that were cosplaying, meaning they were paying 30% of their income towards housing. About 400 of which were paying over 50% of their housing, or their income towards housing. So if you just look at those, right, that, you know, you've got those numbers, but, you know, our model predictions were that we needed an additional 500 units or so. Well, definitely, yeah, if you get another 500 units by 2020, you know, more than 1,000 by margin by 2030.
So this is something we can think about.
Yeah, what's the timeline on these applications?
They are submitted.
I mean, but...
But we don't have to act on them until...
Are we going to see them before August?
With that?
Six weeks?
Not that we get you over the...
All right, well, I look forward to staff's recommendations on how we should proceed after the moratorium date ends. Item B and B, public hearing to hear public input on proposed ordinance to amend ordinance 571 from 2017 approving a rezon from rural residential to general business to correct the typo in the legal description.
Okay, so this one's easy. John Cortez, our recorder, asked me to draft this because there's a typo in one of the legal descriptions, so I noticed it and drafted the ordinance, but then after the notice hit the paper, he came in and said that he found that the amendment was already done. And so this is an unnecessary public hearing. I wanted to leave it on the agenda though because it was in the newspaper, and so I wanted to just address it publicly that this is an unnecessary agenda item.
Any members from the public here to comment on our unnecessary agenda item?
I'm done tonight.
All right, well, just because I'm a rule stickler, we will leave this public comment period open until Wednesday, the 26th. Is that what we said?
Did you?
Oh, I, this...
Can we just like make a motion on this one?
Can we just...
I make a motion to suspend the rules and vote, take action on this.
I second that.
It's rare that I would do that, but I am...
Motion is on the table to suspend the rules and take action. Motion made by Jalen Hawkes, seconded by Terry Morse. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Was that an opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, so motion passes six to one with Mr. Halliday in opposition. Now we're suspending, is there another follow-up motion?
No, no, you have to do a motion to approve over the amendment to the ordinance.
So you guys are going off the tracks here.
Yeah.
Wait, it's done.
You don't have to do anything.
There's no action required.
You don't have to do anything.
I'm trying to watch you try to get us back on.
So, yeah, I mean, Robert's rules, you could just make a motion to deny, but... So, yeah, I mean, Robert's rules, you could just make a motion to deny, but that's not really what you need to do, so just, just don't do anything, and Evan will say that item fails for lack of motion, and that will be the end of it.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there a motion? Seeing none, the item fails for a lack of motion.
Death, time of death.
Uh, any further discussion on item BB? Great, all right. And with that, that brings us to the end of our agenda, and I would like to adjourn this meeting at 7:28.
7:28, what a long day I have had.
Thank you.
Well done. Jesus, wait. Future business stuff, but it didn't work out.
Well, I feel like we kind of opened up a-
You voted no, not suspend rules.
So what was?